I moved to seventh, eighth grade, from seventh to eighth next year.
Oh, okay.
And then I'll move to sixth, and then I'll move to sixth grade.
So what do you move through?
I move through and then go back.
Go back down.
But I've never been this long, and I've taught sixth grade.
That was this morning, so that's...
Wow.
At least the same time zone, so.
No, it's a different time zone.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, we're all set. I'll call a Londonderry Planning Board meeting to order for June 26, 2013. I just want to point out to everyone who is here that we have two exits. On the right-hand side of the audience, we have an emergency need to evacuate. We ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you. Go outside, move away from the building, don't come back in. Our fire officials have instructed everyone to do so. And they're here watching us.
They're all here today.
We do it promptly. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. We'll pledge allegiance to American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have continued plans tonight. First part of the meeting is we're going to do administrative board work. We get our business done. I want to appoint Maria to vote for Scott because I know Scott can't be here. Laura Farr, as I know, is on her way. And right now, we have seven voting members. Okay, administrative board work. We have one plan to sign. And this is Orchard Christian Fellowship Minor Site Plan Amendment. This is located at 136 Pillsbury Road, tax map number six, lot 18-2. And John?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this plan was conditionally approved by the Administrative Review Committee on June 20, 2013. It was a request from Orchard Christian Fellowship for a minor site plan, which included revisions to the landscaping, addition of a dumpster pad and a shed to the site. The plan had been conditionally approved. The precedent conditions have been met. And staff recommends signature of the plan this evening.
Mr. Chair, seeing that staff recommends signature, I'd like to make the motion that we authorize the chair and secretary to sign the plans for 135 Pillsbury, 36 Pillsbury Road, map six lot 18-2.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Absentient, this chair has affirmative. And the plan will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. And next, the only thing else we have is discussion with staff. Anything, John?
Nope, nothing this evening.
I see Litchfield Road is going to be going through some improvements.
Yep, beginning next month. So plan accordingly, please.
Just like last year.
Yep, you got it. From Mr. West.
And I saw that that's been advertised pretty well, so people should be aware.
And accordingly.
And Cynthia?
I don't have anything this evening, I don't think.
Anyone from the board?
Just a quick question for John or Cynthia. There's a lot of traffic measuring devices up on Bartley Hill Road and Noise Road and Stone End. Any idea what that's all about?
I know that some of that, I don't think that was part of Southern Hampshire planning during their yearly traffic counts.
Their traffic counts.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Some people think it's speed, but I don't think it's capable of measuring speed.
Yeah, I think it measures speed.
But it's...
Could it slow them down?
It probably does. Some people, it probably does.
Put them everywhere.
Strikes a tear in their heart. They say, oh. There was, I think, one thing, but I can't, I don't recall it right now. But what we'll do, we'll move to our continued plans. We have Pillsbury Realty Development LLC, tax map 10 lots 15, 23, 29C-2A, 29C-2B, 41, 41-1, 41-2, 42, 45, 46, 47, 48, 50, 52, 54-1, 57, 58, 59, and 62. This is an application acceptance in a public hearing for formal review of the Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development Master Plan. And this is continued from June 12, 2013. And tonight, we are looking at the tax impacts. And that's where we're going to be concentrating our hearing and discussion on. You're on the floor, Ari.
Good morning. I did it again. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Ari Pollock with Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell here for the Woodmont applicants. Behind me is the usual cast of suspects. Mike Kettenbach is here, Jimmy D'Angelo from TEC, Tom Goodwin from Shook Kelly, Nancy Michaels. And this evening, we have Lucy Gallo joining us from DPFG. They are our financial, our fiscal impact consultants. Before I turn things over to Lucy, who is here to present her fiscal impact analysis and report dated May 17 of this year, and I think the board has received copies of that report. Just wanted to give you a quick update on scheduling. Our review clock, based on the last extension, will bring us until July 10. That would be the next evening. I'd asked that the board consider continuing this until. We recognize we're going to need to provide an additional extension beyond that date, and we're working out how far and to when. And so we'll be coming in either with a letter before that, but probably, and then asking for action on that letter the night of July 10.
Okay, because that's, the clock ends on July 10.
Yes, and so we'll get something to the board before that evening, but we'll ask that you be acting on it that night.
Okay.
And so when we complete this evening's discussions, we'll be asking for a motion to continue until July 10. On July 10, it's my hope that we can not only discuss the development agreement, but also the development standards that have been the subject of peer review meetings between our group, staff, and HSH as recently as last Monday.
Yes.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Lucy Gallo, who's here to present fiscal impacts.
Okay.
Would you mind if I used your microphone? Just... I'm fine to stand, but I, can we pull the PowerPoint up real quick?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Good evening, my name is Lucy Gallo. I'm with Development Planning and Finance Group. My office is located in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. And I'm here tonight to speak with you about the fiscal impact analysis that my firm prepared for Woodmont Commons. Can I put it on here?
Did we tell you about the lighthouse we're proposing?
I hadn't heard that.
I know you said pond, but I didn't think you said anything about an ocean.
I have a couple waters.
We'll probably get a rumor started, John.
Looks like a little bit bigger than 19 acres, though.
Is that where you're hiding the water tower?
Good point.
Well.
That's not you, the...
No, I actually have an HP, so is this the correct connection? Is there another?
Yep, that is the correct connection. I'm not sure where that picture's coming from.
I don't know either.
Do we have this in hard copy?
Right there.
Right. I apologize for delay. I'm not sure why my computer isn't talking to that.
All set?
I hope so.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask you a question just before we get too far into it?
Sure.
Be okay if we ask Ms. Gallo to give us a little elevator speech on DPFG and what your background is in working with this type of development?
Absolutely. That's actually my second slide.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure. We are a national real estate consulting firm. We have 10 offices post to post. Many of our partners, like Michelle and Steve, have been consultants to the real estate communities and to state and local governments through both our careers. Part of our service offering, and one that many of us involve, are involved in, is public finance. You can go onto the second slide. Public infrastructure finance. Like I said, I have been serving state and local governments, governmental agencies, and the real estate community for over 25 years. In addition, being in Chapel Hill, I'm a collaborative partner and lecturer at the UNC School of Government, as well as UNC School of City and Regional Planning Department. I do have another, number of published authors, publications, and am a visiting scholar at Winthrop University. I, although my office is based in Chapel Hill, I prepare fiscal impact analysis, as well as economic impact analysis, for large-scale projects all over the country, whether they are master planned community at a conceptual stage, like what we have with Woodmont Commons, or major urban redevelopment projects, the whole gamut of large-scale, fairly complicated real estate development projects. The scope of work for DPFG, for this project, was to look at the planned land uses for Woodmont Commons at build-out that I know that you all have been looking at over the last few months, and to determine their impacts on the Town of Londonderry's general fund. We limited, and it's typical for most fiscal impact analysis, we do look at the general fund because most elected officials and planning boards are interested in what impact that particular land use change would have on property tax rates. And so that is why we will have aimed our focus on the general fund. Go to the next one. Some basics of the fiscal impact methodology that were used on the project, which is very typical in fiscal impact methodology. We use $2,013, constant dollars, assuming no inflation or deflation throughout the build-out period of the project. It can get to be a very complicated and confusing projection analysis if we start developing inflation rates and discount rates in terms of what the cost of services change over a 20-year time period. So to make the analysis most comparable, we use constant dollars. We also use the current property tax rate. We all know for the next 20 years, things might not look exactly the way they do now, but for the ease of comparability, we assume the town's current property tax rates. For the baseline financial analysis, we've used the town's 2013 budget. The market analysis for the commercial components were based on 2013 market data with an additional 15% discount for conservatism and as a sensitivity adjustment. An in-depth analysis was provided by town staff and the school district for police, fire, building, community development, recreation, library, and school operating capital cost. For other departmental impacts, a traditional approach or typical approach of using a variation on a per capita methodology was used. And the reason I went one step further in this particular project and used a functional equivalent population methodology was because it more heavily weights retail uses for other office uses because of the number of visitors that you have, that retail attracts. And that enables us to, with a bit more precision, try to assign a higher level of cost to the different types of the commercial components. But for the most part, a case study approach, which was the analysis prepared by the town staff, was used to estimate the capital and operating costs.
With the capital costs as they increase, or do you look at those increasing in proportion to the population increase? Really, they tie fairly close together.
I would say yes. I mean, there, the pipe depend, and different types of population have different types of demands on capital needs. We know that new population in, whether it be an employment population or residential population, is going to increase fire department costs. It's going to increase the police department. It's going to have additional impacts on roads and recreation and libraries. So what we did not, the reason we chose to look at the town departments that are most sensitive to growth, and that's recreation, library, schools, police, public works, fire. We looked at those in a, not a one-for-one per capita, which is kind of just a really straight line, fairly simple approach. We really had worked closely with town staff on developing what would be for this town's level of service. The town knows its budget best, it knows its area. This, many of these costs are very geographic specific, where the project's located, how convenient is to, for example, the police station. So the town staff were actively involved in putting together these projections. Did I answer your question? Okay. So one of the first steps, I think, in stepping back and looking at the project are really, in terms of the tax and tax, the benefits to the town's tax base. We know London Dairy, at this moment in time, like many communities across the country, is heavily dependent on a residential tax base. And the mix of commercial to residential uses in Woodmont Commons will serve to help have a balancing approach as the town looks to fiscal sustainability and hopefully lessening the burden on some of the, on the residential taxpayer base as Woodmont Commons becomes a vibrant part of the community. And with the tax value of 371 million, the commercial component will really make a, put a significant dent for one single project on helping provide more balance to the tax base. And just as an aside, I know that in reviewing the town's comprehensive master plan, this is part of what the town has been thinking in terms of, the projections within that plan look towards attracting a larger employment base and that the number of employees is going to grow at a much more rapid pace than what the population base is, has been projected to grow. So a project like Woodmont Commons, I think, is really being designed to meet the market forces that are out there in terms of a live, work, and play community. And I think that's also essential on a significant project like this in being able to attract anchor tenants, to be able to get the long-term leases that would need to be in place for the construction financing. I'm starting at the conclusion first. So you'll notice in the report that I issued, the at build-out, in which we are assuming over 20-year period, the Woodmont Commons project will produce a general fund annual net fiscal surplus. I don't think that's probably a big surprise to anyone. A project of this scale with this significant type of commercial components, particularly, I think, the high-quality, the live-work components could be very attractive to the market. And that type of balance is, would be likely to yield a net surplus. And based on the analysis that we prepared, we're anticipating, based on this stage of the conceptual plan, that surplus would be $1.4 million at build-out. And if we wanted to look at the cumulative effects of the net surplus over the 20-year build-out, at the end of the 20 years, there would be a $12.3 million net surplus. Woodmont Commons is expected to bring 3,600 new residents and almost 3,800 new employees to the town based on these land uses.
Do you build any margin of error into the numbers?
Very good question. We build conservatism, in my opinion, in the analysis from the get-go. I'm a CPA by training, that's my natural inclination. We avoid any sort of multiplier indirect impacts. We limit, for example, on a revenue impacts, those are limited to property taxes and motor vehicle permit fees. There are some fiscal impact analysis that will look at, okay, we're going to have direct impacts on what the project brings on-site, but they're going to be spin-off jobs. There's going to be ripple effects that we're going to create jobs here, but there's going to be also other revitalization of other areas in town. We're not trying to take, and projects, I don't think, should take credit for that other type of auxiliary, auxiliary build-out that occurs. But this is, our analysis was limited strictly to what is going to occur on-site. I've tried throughout all of the analysis to be very transparent in the source of the assumptions. We know this is at the conceptual stage. There's a level of specificity no one has, but we have put together the best information that we have and have shared those assumptions with you, including the sources. I think that probably the, where, an area that I had already mentioned earlier that I build in a sensitivity analysis is on the commercial component. We already have, I've put together what I felt like was work, a conservative approach to the commercial valuation. We know there's, there really aren't any active comparables in this area to be able to say, yeah, I think it's going to look like that project so I can look at those assessed values. So what I did was put together a reasonable set of assumptions and then discounted those 15%. So we'd have that extra level of conservatism built in.
The master plan had talked to revenues from rooms and meals taxes to being added into the equation, and whether or not it would be tax positive. But the numbers we have here just represent property taxes and motor vehicle registrations?
Right. It's my understanding, at this point in time, the allocation of the rooms and meals tax is frozen from the state distributing to local communities. So until that distribution method changes, I think it would have been overstating the results to assume that at some point in time, it would go back to a per capita distribution approach when that's not happening at the current point in time. Good point.
And it's impossible, at this point, to determine in each year which, I mean, it's just an average fiscal impact. It's not a, it's not a, there's no way to determine whether or not in year one, there would be a negative impact, and in year two, there would be a positive. And so they would offset each other in year three or four or five. It depends on what's built.
And that's a really good question. You'll see in the analysis, we tried to make some reasonable assumptions about the momentum of commercial activity that would take place in order for the commercial activity itself to create momentum for it to come onboard. For example, commercial would not come onboard at 100,000 square feet a year for 20 years, for example. That's just not the way a commercial, a large-scale development like this would likely occur. We know that we have some triggers in there. For example, a hospital and potential other uses that would generate synergies that would create that activity. So what we tried to do in a 20-year build-out analysis, which was included in the building in the appendix, was put together a set of assumptions on this is what commercial build-out could look like. And in pairing that with the way the population projections for your comprehensive plan had a bit slower residential population growth, that was our thinking in putting together that build-out plan. We don't know exactly, at this point in time, how it would, will be built out. But, you know, I would say it would, based on what the developers' plans are, we would expect the commercial to come on sooner rather than later and come on with gusto and with momentum for it to be successful. But to answer your question, no, it is premature, at this point in time, to predict in any one particular year what the results will be.
Thank you.
I think they have a table on page 33 that has their estimate of that break.
No, I haven't read it. I just wanted to put it out there.
But I guess I should back up for our charge. That was really presented more for additional information, to see how in the world we got to this point and to really, I have a glimpse of what this project will look like. It's a 20-year build-out period. So, but that was really for purposes of additional information. Okay. Thanks, Cynthia.
Did you talk about this slide?
I guess I should, I know we talked about revenues. So again, as I mentioned earlier, we limited the revenue approach to property taxes, commercial and residential, and motor vehicle permit fees. I know the town is used to seeing the tax rate of 4.85. I know for the public, when they go to their property tax bills, it's a much higher number because it includes other components. It includes the county, it includes schools. But this, our analysis was limited strictly to the town's portion of the tax revenue and because that's what flows through to the town's budget. And at build-out, Woodmont Commons, we're projecting would generate annual revenues of $5.1 million. And we did assume a net collection percentage based on the town's current collection rate, which is very high. I've included a couple of slides just to talk a bit about market value assumptions. We consulted, and we needed to, because again, there are not any comparables in this area for the type of project that we know that the developer has, intends to bring to London Dairy. So in addition to our firm's own capital markets group, we also worked with data from a number of very well-qualified, credible national sources, as well as one-on-one consultations with I-Star Financial and Cushman and Wakefield. But on top of making sure that, as I mentioned before, making sure that I felt like that we had a good, solid baseline, we included the 15% sensitivity adjustment, which if, from a cap rate standpoint, in essence, converts what we can consider to be a very, a reasonable cap rate to one with more cushion. If we had not included the 15% adjustment, the bottom line would have been $315,000 higher, as would the annual tax revenue. These are just some examples that, the supporting data that we look to, that we are able to get, the greater Boston suburban area, eastern region, various types of retail uses. And all of those, the types of data went into putting together what we thought was the most reasonable set of assumptions for this project. The, as I mentioned earlier, I was able to visit London Dairy in January on the day that it was 60 degrees, so it was a very nice day to visit. And had started a series of meetings and conversations with town staff and was very impressed with the analysis that the staff prepared to assist in this process. I supplied samples of other reports and samples of different spreads, types of spreadsheets and approaches. And each different department chose what they felt like was best to summarize their particular impacts. And I was really impressed with the thoughtfulness and diligence that would, that was put into trying to anticipate those impacts. The school district prepared all of the operating capital cost impacts for the schools. And for the departments where we didn't have a staff involvement or just because of the stage, this conceptual stage, we had insufficient information to really dig down for what are the exact costs going to be, then it was my job to employ the best, most, the best-practiced fiscal impact methodologies to come up with those, my best way of estimating those results. At build-out, I'm anticipating the general fund expenditures to increase annually by $3.7 million. As you might imagine, police, fire, and public works are going to be the departments most impacted, so... So I think that's all falling out as one might expect. And as far as the London Dairy School District, the one, as you all know, the school district does have available capacity. So unlike other communities that might be facing this type of residential growth, the school district does have availability within its operating cost and within the school buildings themselves to house a number of additional schoolchildren. So fortunately, this project is expected to generate an annual net surplus of $7.3 million for the London Dairy School District. As I mentioned earlier, our analysis used the fiscal year '13 budget, which is for June 30th, 2013. At, for, at this particular time, the school district is not yet accepting students from the subset community and charging tuition for allowing those students to come into the school district. They're anticipating doing that this fall, and my report, or one of my responses, I think, to the peer review addressed that I believe that would be a additional revenue to the school district of $600,000 this fall when they begin accepting those schoolchildren. But for purpose of our analysis, it wasn't part of the revenue stream and wasn't part of the expenditures, so that did not fall out in my particular part of the report, although it is a special mention item. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Sure. I'm sure we'll have plenty, just if staff has any input at this point at all.
Yeah, again, just one comment again from Public Works. Again, Lucy indicated that the future costs were based on average per capita cost estimates. And I know Public Works is very difficult to determine. And again, just from my limited understanding of fiscal impact analysis, I just don't think that the, the analysis does an accurate estimate of the true impacts to the Department of Public Works. The setting being proposed for Woodmont is more of an urban-city-type setting. The town currently has minimal equipment to perform urban setting, summer and winter operations. The fiscal impact analysis also does not appear to address the impacts associated with solid waste or sanitary waste collection and disposal. Again, as we indicated, it's based on future, the future costs are based on average per capita cost estimates. The type of development, again, being proposed for Woodmont is very different from what London Dairy presently supports. And any additional and extraordinary costs may be incurred in providing services in a much denser urban-like environment. That's, again, you, people have seen the palettes they're showing for roadways. The question is, how much of that is public, how much of that is private? What's the anticipated level of service on-street parking? You know, so again, I think you understand where I'm coming from.
Cynthia, would you mind pulling that back, the expenditures back up real quick so we can look at the actual costs that were charged just to get that first. And if you wouldn't mind responding to John, because I know that there's concerns with some.
Yes, I'm sure we got questions that are very similar to what John has well expressed.
How far do I want me to go?
Just the one that has the expenditure.
I'm not sure which one that was.
Keep going forward and I'll tell you when to stop. I'm sorry, backwards. There you go. There were, at this stage of the game, there were a couple of ways, one more, I'm sorry, two more. A couple of ways to look at, sorry, one more. One more, there you go. There are a couple of ways to look at impacts on Public Works because we don't know a lot yet about the exact, on the street designs, necessarily exactly what the street widths are going to be. It would not be unusual in a fiscal impact analysis to take the number of linear road miles in a project and estimate annual costs and equipment needs based on the number of linear road miles. And that was my first pass at looking at what those costs would be compared to the number of linear road miles in the town today. As an alternative approach, I then compared that, those results to saying, let's take all of the Public Works expenditures that flow through the general fund today, of which sanitation does not, I don't believe. But it, there are impacts, that just wasn't within my scope. But to take all of the existing public expenditure, expenditures on Public Works and how much is the town currently spending per employee, working in the town and per person? And because those costs generated a much higher amount than just simply using a per meter road mile approach, that's why I went with a more of a per capita approach because the results were more conservative than if we just went through linear mile. You know, in my mind, I would hope for that additional 900,000, there is cushion built in because I know we're not exactly at an apples and apples point. But it's, we're just at the stage of the design where it's hard to get a more specific number, but in that particular area, at least in my mind, the analysis is having the expenditure cost is based on what is the current level of service that is currently being supplied to residents and employees in the town.
I understand, I understand what she's saying, but again, just our roadway network as it exists today, minimum was 24 feet of pavement with no medians, no sidewalks. It's a whole different.
It's all asphalt.
The way I look at it, we're not comparing apples and apples, and that's just my take on it. That's all I had.
Yeah, I think at some, some point, we've got to be, you know, somewhat, somewhat close on trying to capture what the costs are. You know, I'm, this is probably, this is really difficult. It's, a lot of it is, there's a lot of assumptions that are made initially, and then, you know, our viewpoint is always going to be different from, like your viewpoint. You're probably more scientific and looking at, you know, per capita enforcement and so forth that translate where we are really coming the other way.
John, did you have any idea about costs?
No, because again, I don't know, you know, the amount of public road, what that particular public road will be looking like, you know, and again, who's maintaining the grass strip in the middle? The lighting?
Right.
You know, so there's a number of, number of unknowns.
And I know I'm the person who always asks this, but can I just ask a favor? Whenever you're talking, can you just grab that microphone from home?
Yeah.
Because it's really hard to hear you, it's not hard to hear you in here, but it is, nobody could hear you at home.
I apologize, I apologize, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Quick question on the slide you have up there, because I don't think that's included in the package that we have, that summary sheet there. So that is, just for clarification for everybody else's benefit, that's the annual impact, right?
Correct.
So it's about 3.7, what you're talking about?
Exactly.
Today's dollars.
Yeah.
Correct. And that number, I mean, that particular schedule is taken directly from, from the master report?
Yeah, I think it's in places, it's sort of in other areas, it's sort of, wasn't accumulated into one place like that.
Correct.
Just to make clear, that's, that's not a net number. That's, that's the expense side.
That's the expense side, yes.
The revenue side.
We've got the revenue side table, I didn't have an expenditures one that was all summarized.
We're waiting for questions.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm waiting for everybody else.
Okay, anything sent here?
Not right now.
Okay, not this way. Okay, I'll go through the board and then we'll go through any other town employees that have anything, and then the public. So I'll start with Chris.
Always me.
You're the, you're the leadoff.
Chris, could you ask such great questions and that?
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that before we have the board speak, that you actually hear from RKG, who did the peer review, and then you get the.
Okay, and I know there's a difference of opinion, and, you know, that probably is going to be important to us as we weigh everything, so. I mean, Ted, maybe you can do the intro, introduction of the gentleman from RKG. Robin, yeah, that microphone should be well and functioning.
I am Ted Robins from Howard Steinhausen, and part of our team is Craig Seymour from RKG Associates located in Dover. They are economists and real estate market specialists. So Craig has taken a look at the fiscal impact analysis and has some observations and comments and recommendations.
Okay, we'll take those. Thank you Cynthia.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, my name is Craig Seymour. I'm president and managing principal of RKG Associates. We are based over in Dover, New Hampshire, and have an office in Washington, right outside of Washington DC. And we too are a national firm that does a lot of work in fiscal and economic impacts on all kinds of facilities around the country. Let me start off by saying, and I'll cut to the chase here very quickly. You've read our memos back and forth. Much of that is differences of professional opinions in terms of the methodologies used or some of the assumptions that are made. But overall, we concur with the results that have been presented here that given the assumptions that are presented and given the assumptions on how this will develop and be developed out into the future, that once it's built, it will be positive from a net fiscal impact basis. The numbers, we have a little bit of disagreement in terms of those, but overall, I think there are just a couple of major points that I'd like to discuss with the board very briefly. And remember, we were hired as, to be peer reviewers, not necessarily to discredit them, and I won't. It's a very good report, they're a very reputable firm, and they've done a good job with this, seeing the complexity and the long-term nature of it. But I see our role as being able to provide to you, the policymakers in this issue, with a, with an understanding, a better understanding of where the sensitivity of some of these numbers may come into the future and how things may change. We're talking about a very large, five-plus million square feet of development taking place over a 20-year period. We don't know, based upon the master plan that's been proposed, that it's out there, exactly what that's going to look like. And under the PUD regulations that are being promulgated for this, that's, that's fine, and that's what PUDs are for. It allows the development to be flexible, to meet the needs of the marketplace as it moves forward in time. And the struggle that we're having, that you're having here, is how do you now regulate that growth with the, in face of some of these unknowns? I know Ted has brought this up before with you and discussed it in terms of the development agreement and those types of things. But from a fiscal impact perspective, again, I want to reiterate that if it's built the way it is, it will be positive. It will generate more revenue primarily from property taxes than it will cost the town to provide those services. However, there's some assumptions built into that that you need to be sensitive to. Two major ones. One is, will it be built in the fashion forecast over that 20-year period? You're talking about a tremendous amount of commercial and retail development that is scheduled to go into that site in a, and if you think in terms of how London Dairy and Dairy and the greater Manchester market has developed over the past 30 or 40 years.
Would not.
Sorry.
It is, it is an aggressive, in my opinion, it is an aggressive forecast that hopefully can be reached. But I think it really, it looks back at the kind of development patterns that have took, took place in New Hampshire, particularly southern New Hampshire, in the late 1990s and the early 2000s. Whether we're going to return to that area is completely unknown at this point in time. Now, the issue is, that's fine, but how, what happens if the various elements, the residential and the commercial elements, don't go according to their plan and develop at different paces? Well, the information is there in the report. They have the spreadsheet tables that show year by year. We didn't have the opportunity to go in and play with some of those variables, but it can be done to see where the costs are going to be incurred versus when the development's going to be here. Now, in all honesty, a lot of those costs are based upon either the square footage, the amount of employment, or the number of residents that are in there. So as any of those elements change, either slow down or speed up, the costs the town will, are associated with that will also change proportionally to that. So in theory, it may keep that positive net balance, which they show each of the fiscal years, may keep, keep ahead of itself. But on the other hand, there may be investments that the community has to make, such as in Public Works or such as fire equipment and those types of things, that you have to make at a certain point in time, because as you know, when you're dealing with, particularly with fixed costs, fixed capital costs, you hit a tipping point. You don't need a new fire engine until you need a new fire engine, then you need that new fire engine, and you have to have it on, in the, in the stable waiting to go. Well, you can't add half a fire, half a fire engine, you've got to add a whole one. So there is a little bit of uncertainty built into that. The other, and you'll see, again, going back and forth with our comments back and forth on this thing, we disagree a little bit in terms of the summaries or the assumptions used for population projections. They look at it, and rightly so, I understand the methodology they use. As you're looking at this thing 20 years out of our 20-year timeframe, over a wide variety of potential residential units that they've got averages for, but they're everything from studio apartments to very large, very large, single-family homes across that spectrum. And again, with the PUD, not knowing exactly what that breakout is, it's very hard to be precise on your forecast for how many kids are generated by those homes, how many people are generated who are going to live in those homes. It's a good average approach, average cost approach to do that. However, recognizing that, for example, if the market says, okay, come 2018, everybody who wants to come to London Dairy wants to live in a 4,500-square-foot, four-bedroom home, that's going to change those dynamics a little bit. So it's important to recognize that there is going to be some variability in this. And I, my recommendation is that in your development agreement, that you have mechanisms in there so that the fiscal impact analysis and discussion can be brought forward and discussed. And these elements can be included in that as this thing builds out over time and as special requirements are made or as markets change on that. So in summary, that's really what we said. But again, overall, based upon the assumptions, it is fiscally positive and generally will be. It is the type of development that isn't in this market today, but certainly is something that the market in general terms is looking for and will be looking at. Whether they'll come to London Dairy, that's all, that's an issue. It's a New Hampshire marketplace. Right now, New Hampshire is struggling, as you know, both from a tax perspective as well as from, you know, revenue and expenditure perspective. Towns are struggling, certainly London Dairy is having its fair share of issues, as everyone else says. And it's a very uncertain time in terms of trying to predict what the future market's going to be out there. And so, you know, I don't envy you for being in the position of making these tough decisions in that, in that environment of uncertainty, but I think there's a good basis here for moving forward and making some good policy-level decisions for the community. So I'll stop with that unless somebody has a question for me.
Probably what we need to do is like a balance between something comes along as tax positive, if something comes along tax negative, it needs to be offset with something tax positive to keep the, a consistency there?
Possibly, or to monitor it so that if it looks like there are, the type of development that's going up or is going to be developed, is going to put that general equation out of balance, that some steps can be taken in order to alleviate that and mitigate any adverse costs that the community may have in that process. And again, you can use the example, there's lots of, it's hard to pinpoint anything, but, you know, it could be a point where the first building, and I think the police, I mean, the fire analysis that they did, one of the issues they brought up is the need at some point for an aerial, a new aerial ladder truck, because as these buildings go up.
There's, there's height.
Yeah, you've got to be able to get up there. Or on the big buildings, the other thing about aerial ladder trucks is on the large footprint buildings, and there's several of those, as you can see, laid out in the thing, to be able to get over that roof a certain distance. Now, ladder trucks, as they pointed out, are very expensive. They're million-dollar apparatus that have multiple functions, but the first building that goes up that is of a certain height or a certain size is going to trigger the need for that. And the issue is, if that's the only building that goes up for 10 years, then you're going to have a capital outlay that's going to, you know, be negative because you're bonding it or you're paying for that. Again, that's just only a hypothetical example. But, so being able to monitor that as you go through, and, you know, I would suggest being able to have points in your development agreement that says, okay, it's moving off of where we thought we were going to be. Let's, let's reanalyze it, let's see where we are with it and reintroduce. it, and reintroduce some, at least a discussion about that. It'd be my recommendation on that.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll go through the board and then we'll go through any of our public officials that are here, and then we'll go to the public. And Chris, our leadoff.
Well, I think the gentleman just sort of raised the issue, the biggest issue to me that was glaring at me was finally having some materials in hand to look through this was that, okay, you know, there's, at this point, it's an estimation, it's an educated guess, but that specific issue kind of really stuck out at me. And particularly the table, I went through the table on page 33, which talked to the, you know, incremental, what could be benefit, and I presume it was based upon some factoring of what we felt the development, or you felt the development might break down as commercial versus residential. And, you know, I just went through that and did my own little math and said, well, what if the commercial didn't occur at that point? What if market conditions didn't, you know, demand that that be done, but the residential occurred? It goes negative very quickly. And it could be five years before we start seeing the demand for, you know, some of the aspects that we're looking for here. There may be some commercial, but it's not the scale. And I think it's, I think that's the thing that really stuck out to me was that I'd like to have some, we need to discuss that particular aspect and have some discussions with the developer about how we control that, because that could be a very serious impact for the town. Now, if we didn't have commercial in the development in the first 10 years, that's a negative three million. It could have come out of somebody's pocket.
No, I know, I appreciate what you're saying. I just want to put out there that if we, if we didn't have any commercial ever, we would have 600 single-family homes and we would have a negative impact.
I'd like to have that number to be able to educate the public about that, too. That would be a good piece to have in the analysis to say...
Well, not necessarily 600, but you know what I'm...
It's a 600, you know, it's that size in acreage and that's how many one-acre, you know, under current zoning could be permitted. What would that be the impact on the town? It'll give something for folks to confess on, particularly, you know, if I'm sitting here making that question, someone out there is going to be making that question, and it would be good to inform them, you know, the alternative is. So here, we've got some plus side, you know, and, you know, and I think it would be prudent that we have some, that was the one thing I also had in addition to a question on the table was, if we could get some more information on what you felt that base was, what some of those decisions were on the feeding of the commercial versus the residential across the 20 years, would be good information to have in this, so some of those assumptions.
I think what, Chris makes a very good point, because a lot of the town's growth, especially in 70s, very strongly the 80s, residential growth was just really very explosive, caused the tax rate to go sky-high, brought about, you know, wealth management, impact fees, looking at where we get to the point of increasing commercial industrial growth offset, you know, the tax negativity of residents. So this town has a very strong history of, it's probably growth that will never be seen again, but from, you know, like the 70s to the 90s, we've probably quadrupled the population of the town in that 20-year period. So there's a lot of, a lot of memories from that on some of us. There's more recent people that come here, like in the 2000s, they haven't seen the growth that this town has gone through.
Well, to Art's point, and following on from Mary's, that that growth was all residential.
Yes.
That was all significant impact on services for the town, so it would be good to have that as a comparison against what's being proposed here, so townsfolk are informed about, you know, compare apples to apples there.
Exactly.
The other aspect of this, in terms of, you know, how the commercial growth was going to work out was, and I know it'll be a question raised by the public, will be, what happens if the eastern side of the development, what part of the 20-year plan was accounted into both the expenditures and to the revenues on that piece if that doesn't go through? So, because it is, you know, very geographically separate, it's going to be more, I think, commercial rather than residential, it's got more heavy weighting of commercial over there. What would be the impact there if that didn't happen? I know that question will get asked. I think all of my questions were sort of all around those ones, you know, there was a lot of two and fourths I saw on the methodologies being determined and, you know...
Well, Craig just likes to talk about that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I say potato, you say potado.
You don't want two economists going down the weeds, what do you think?
To John's point, too, the one thing that did surprise me, I think page 13 was, and I presume that that calculation in there was purely general government, not fire, emergency services, public works, et cetera, those were external to that?
Correct, that's correct. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, on, in, probably, if you turn the page to page 14, under table 12, then you can start looking at the different departments that were included in, in the general government, and it's basically finance assessing, information technology, community development was part of that zoning.
Okay, so it's all the folks in sort of this building, not the folks that people are saying...
Exactly.
They see when they dial up or...
Exactly.
Complain that there's a problem in the street, or there's a problem with their trash. Okay. So that was, that was something that was a little tough to understand when I first went through this.
It's a long report, so, yeah.
Yeah, there was, it was general government, and then it was police, and then it was the fire. Last thing I had a comment on was, you had that great chart, which I referred to on page 33, we don't have anything like that against the school data.
There was a separate school fiscal impact?
Yeah, I couldn't find a chart like that, that went the, through the 20 years of revenue versus impact.
I see what you're saying. The school district did not prepare their analysis as such. They really were looking at build-out, I think they're, they know they have adequate capacity, so I'm not sure they necessarily felt it was necessary to do the 20-year build-out and try to make assumptions on exactly what grade levels were going to be, the project would be generating at what grade levels through each year of their build-out, when they felt pretty comfortable at build-out, how things would...
So the...
So it could be fine-tuned, the school district just chose not to do that.
Okay, so that's something that we need to ask the school district to provide to us?
Yes.
Okay. I guess duly noted, we asked Mr. Curro for that one.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, that was clear.
For now.
Yeah.
No questions at this time.
Okay. John?
Thank you for putting this together. Couple of questions, just for comparators. So if I did some quick math, and it looks like roughly 2.2 million square feet of non-residential, does that sound about right, of non-residential buildup?
Uh...
Does that sound about right? Of 5.5 million square feet of the property?
5.2, I think we had estimated 5.2.
5.2.
Hotel.
Okay. So that roughly equates to about 42% of the buildup?
Correct.
Is that correct? All right, I just want to make sure those numbers are good.
Are you talking about maybe on table five, are you trying to get the percentage of the tax base that's residential versus...
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not going to back into that yet.
Okay, okay.
But what I'm, what I'm looking at is making sure that I have what is considered to be the square footage numbers of the overall property versus the number of square feet that is designated for non-commer, excuse me, non-residential. And I think I've got 2.2 million non-residential square feet as outlined in the document.
The development program on table three, is table three on page eight, is maybe what you're looking for? Part of the, I've included the number of keys from the lodging to be consistent, for the hotels to be consistent with the Templar that you all have been shown before.
Let me, let me, let me back into where I'm at. I mean, can we, can we assume the 2.2?
Sure.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure. From a perspective of Pettingill Road, how big is Pettingill Road, and what is the estimated buildup of square feet there? Isn't John, do you know? I don't remember.
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Someone's for that info.
Rough ideas, a million, two million?
It's a thousand acres up here, you could do a thousand acres, try to be bonded by a town, build the roads.
Yeah, okay, so my question now becomes, now it's more economics, right? So I have, I have a significant project that sits up in the northern, northwest of the town, and then I have a significant project that's being proposed for 2.2 million square feet, right? Was that factored in from an economic standpoint of competing? So I have a, I have an area that's struggling, has been struggling for a while, and then I have a buildup that's happening on the opposite side of town, and they're going to be essentially competing.
It's probably an assumption.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking the economic people. So was that, was that brought into, into account?
Not from my analysis.
Pettingill Road is an industrial-zoned area, it's not going to have any residential, it's not likely to have very much commercial. If it does, it's only going to be support.
Right, but given, given I have 42%, what I'm saying is, if I back into this with the economics, okay, we're having, we're struggling up in the north with a zoned out, you know, not-for-residential property, and I have 42, I have 2.2 million down here, and I'm asking if that has been factored in as part of the, of the impact to whether or not we're going to be able to have positive growth with this?
I think what Cynthia was saying, there are different land uses, so they wouldn't be competing. We have commercial and retail versus industrial, so we, Woodmont Commons would have commercial, office, retail, residential.
But I think the answer is whether it does or not, we haven't evaluated, we haven't considered it as a factor.
Okay. I mean, is that something we should be factoring in to, to the growth of Woodmont versus the remainder growth within London Dairy?
I don't believe so.
Okay, that's fair. Maybe another way to ask it is, do we feel that they both can sustain if they both started growing? If they, you know, we had, if we were courting people to come into our town, we have one that's, that's, you know, been sitting out there, and we have a new one, right? We have Woodmont.
I'd like to think that you would extol the virtues of both.
Well, we would try to, yes, I would agree, but from an economic standpoint, I wanted, wanted to see what we...
If in fact there are both.
I'm sorry?
If there are both presented, you know, each project is conceptual at this stage, we're hopeful that this master plan is approved and can be built out.
Okay.
Pettingill also is conceptual at this stage.
Right, okay. From a project standpoint, as far as the preparation of the document, do you have anything that's comparable in size that we can have as a comparator? So here's what I'm looking for. I'm seeing a 20-year project plan that is not taking in, you know, the current economics, and it's going on 20 years, and we're making some assumptions, and I can appreciate that. And it looks like we're running flat as far as the time value of money, right? So, which concerns me, obviously, when we run flat, because it never happens. Do you have a study that is similar to this in size, that we can say either, I don't care who gives it to me, also one that is well on its way as, as far as estimate versus reality, basically?
There are, you know, many successful master plan communities across the country, whether or not that many after-the-fact fiscal impact analysis are prepared, you know, I have done occasionally a look-back analysis 20 years down the road, but there, you commonly don't go back and do another one. The, the health is shown by the fact that the development is sustainable. You know, their, their anchor tenants are in place, residential is in place, the project is fulfilling whatever objective that particular community had when the project was approved. And to answer your question another way, it would be highly unlikely any community that had this level of commercial in this location proximate to roads and schools and other town services would not be fiscally positive. There's just too, too large of a commercial component.
Let me ask it another way, do you have, do you have references that, you know, towns like us?
Have lots of references, definitely.
Well, what I'm saying is, the project is 10, 15 years down the road, you know, I'd like to get their input, you know, as we're embarking on this, you know, and obviously you put together a plan such as this, and they run with the plan, and obviously it'd be nice to talk to someone 15 years down the road, 10 years down the road, that says, hey, you know what, the plan was pretty good, or we had this issue or that issue.
Absolutely, I understand what you're saying.
Right, so that's what I'm after. I'm really looking for, you know, some, some type of reference, if you would, you know...
Lessons learned from other communities, absolutely.
Lessons learned and so forth, I think would be beneficial to the group here.
Absolutely.
You know, as far as moving forward and making a decision, and I think it was brought up earlier about, you know, having a way to kind of manage and monitor, right? Again, I think that's, that's a pretty good way to identify those things that need to be managed and monitored, and key performance indicators, key performance indicators as far as how the project is running and what we need to do in economic cycles. I have another question to a comment that you made earlier about traffic and high levels being based on commercial, and it kind of dovetails into the whole traffic study, but I'm not going to do that because it's more economic than...
Yep, mine wasn't necessarily traffic per se when I was talking about a population approach. I wanted to make sure that when I'm assigning, for example, the estimating police or fire, I know the police department did their own analysis, that I took into consideration that I just didn't use a generic, here's a commercial component, without having some variation in the number of visitors, that because a visitor could generate a police trip, for example, so that's what I wanted to make sure of, and factored into the analysis of public works, too, that I didn't just assume employees would be generating service demand in the commercial uses, I considered that it was the employees of that commercial unit plus visitors that come to that unit, just as another layer of conservatism in the service demand.
So can I ask you a question? I'll ask both of you the question, and it may be a little bit sideways to economics, but from a live-here, work-here community, based on the numbers that you're seeing from a commercial perspective and the type of industry at this particular point, what do you estimate the live-work versus work-outside come-in to be?
I wouldn't have a specific percentage of, without knowing what, I mean, what types of anchor tenants. I don't have a rule, a benchmark to say, you know, typically in these communities, you're going to be able to capture 30% that are going to be live-work. I'm sure that there are studies that may be published on historical experience of what that truly happens, but I don't have any with me tonight. Craig, you do?
No, I don't either. And it is very, very difficult to try to forecast that without knowing specifically what kinds of companies are there, the types of employees that are there, whether they would want to, you know, if they're, for example, if they're, if there's, if it's big-box retail or, you know, traditional retail like you have, that's going to generate a different, you know, type of, number and type of employees relative to the housing both within that development and the housing within the community, as opposed to, you know, medical R&amp;D versus computer office space, whatever it might be, each of them is so different. And I've really never seen any, you know, standards or statistics that go along with that, or I'm not familiar with any studies that have actually looked back and tried to do that, other than some very urban areas where you have an increasing number of people who are choosing to live nearby where some new development, these jobs are. And most of that has been focused on in the, you know, the Boston's and... And most of that has been focused on in the, you know, the Boston's and the Washington's and the places like that, as opposed to suburban markets.
And I think having a sufficient amount of housing product that would be able to serve a wide variety of employees that would be employed within, employed onsite, you know, if you take a hospital, for example, there's nurses, there's technicians, there's doctors, there's a wide range of incomes. And, and having a wide range of housing selections where you can have the ability to pair up for folks that want to live, live and work close to home, that's just an example of where it would really work very well.
And I'd have to agree with that, particularly with the, what is envisioned for Woodmont Commons with a variety of housing types available. It is probably going to capture more people living there and working nearby, whether it's right in Woodmont Commons or within the, within the town, than if it was just one type of housing.
Yes, thank you.
If I could just chime in, recall in the traffic study, we, we had a big discussion about what our assumptions were going to be. And we used ITE trip generation rates for various types of uses. And between ourselves and HSH, you know, we, we had this spread of what the shared trip making could be. And it could range 35, 37 percent on the high end, and down to 20 percent on the low end. And I think that for our trip making capacity, we agreed on a 23 percent shared trips, which was, again, on the conservative side. And again, will be looked at with each time we take a bite. The next time we go, the first time, you know, given approval, the first time that we come in for site plan approval, we will be doing a specific traffic study for that specific use, and we'll be using trip rates. And then when we come back the second time, we'll be monitoring what happened on the, on the first phase, and how, what kind of trip making capacity that took place. So, I just want to refresh everyone's memory about the traffic analysis that we did, and what kind of shared trips that we, that we used in order to develop the mitigation measures that we came up with. So again, I think that we were conservative in our, in our traffic analysis, and likewise, whether Craig does this, or Lucy does this, we always try to be conservative so that we have some built in protection when we get to the end.
So, in your case, conservative means you reduce the number of trips is conservative?
Yeah, we reduced what would be shared trips.
So they overestimate how many trips there would be?
Reduced the, what could be a, a reduction from the total. So if there's 100 trips that could possibly take place under general circumstances in this planned unit development, because it's a live work play, there's some experience that says, well, you could reduce those trips by 35 percent. And HSH said, well, jeez, let's, I really would like you to use only 23 percent. So, we used only the 23 percent as our shared trip making capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
Well, I just want to thank you. It was a very thorough report. And also, RPG, your response was very easy to understand and easy to read, and I appreciate that. I wish it could have been more picturesque, as the rest of it has been all throughout this thing, but when you're dealing with numbers, that's not possible. So I appreciate that. But I, I, these guys always ask really great questions. That's why I love sitting in the middle, because they're already done. And I, I'm able to just listen and have those questions, although Lynn always asks great questions too, so I'm just going to pass it on to Lynn.
Okay. So I, a couple of things jumped out at me when I started going through this. One was capital expense, and, and how capital expense is getting captured, and, you know, DPW, let's start with that. You know, one of our earlier meetings, we talked about roads and road improvements outside of the development, and that you'd be looking for the town to finance those types of improvements. None of that, I believe, is captured in this analysis, or I didn't see it anyway. And, you know, a $12 million impact over 20 years isn't a lot of money. So I'm afraid that, you know, something like that could eat that up real fast and put us in a negative position. And the same thing with the fire department as well, with the ladder truck that Mr. Seymour pointed out to, we may need a ladder truck real early in the development before there's a lot of other commercial property coming on to increase the tax base. And just things like that, I think could really eat away at the savings very quickly.
Just what, since you brought up fire, what I wanted to make sure that everyone understood, and it's on page 21 in table 23, the analysis has, has built into it that fire equipment of 3.4 million has been considered. The way I developed the assumptions, it was using a, I think it was around $300,000 in debt service every year, so it would be financed. But I didn't want anyone to have an impression that fire capital costs weren't considered in full. And the way that number was derived was to take a, a complete inventory, well, let me back up a minute. You know, from, from my experience, and I know the, the fire department is, is here, so they can certainly chime in as well, but, you know, a fire works on a, a system, and not, not just, you know, a, a one-off. So what I felt like it was important to do for a project this large is take the entire inventory of fire department capital costs today, at, at my best estimates of what current costs are for the equipment and for, for the stations. And then to, for, for that being one part of the cost accounting equation. And then the others, assignment was based on the number of calls that are expected to be generated based on the town's data that has been collected over time for whether it's apartment or single family housing, or type of, of commercial use. And the operating costs were developed the same way. So we developed, based on land uses within Woodmont Commons, the expected number of calls, the all-in operating cost and all-in capital cost. I just didn't want you to, for there to be misunderstanding that capital costs for fire equipment were not built in at a significant level.
Oh, and that goes back to my earlier question about the proportional aspect of the capital costs, if it's based on, you know, increase in population, which would drive the increase in the number of calls.
Correct.
So, another question that jumped out at me was on housing values. I think we used $345,000, a 200, 250 square foot home as the basis for a standalone home?
I, I think it was closer to 365.
365. And I was wondering how that tied in with what the master plan had, or, you know, with some of the presentations that we've been given in terms of land use and density and things like that, in terms of what type of housing is planned. You know, a lot of the plans we've been looking at, we get into a lot of flexibility questions, and, you know, there's not a lot of concrete numbers provided. This is the first time we've seen concrete numbers, but I don't know how they tie to what other presentations we've seen. And once again, a swing, one way in property values could easily drive us in, I think, to a tax negative situation. And then the last question I have is, or it's not a question, but, you know, it ties into Chris. Chris and I are very closely aligned on exit 4A and the east side of 93. And if that doesn't happen, you know, what does it, what does that do to these numbers?
Yeah, how do we shift?
And how do we shift? Now, I guess my last question is, is there any plan to go back and revisit these numbers at any point in time, or is this kind of like the final report?
I think I would say that at this point, it's a projection for the approval of the master plan, that the project is reasonably predicted to be positive. Any number of things could occur that would upset the assumptions and projections that we're making at this point. And so, you know, I, I think what Lucy was explaining earlier was that a look back analysis is not common, but I don't see why it couldn't happen. I don't see why it couldn't be something that's woven into either the development agreement or some other vehicle in the approval. But right now, the projection, which I'm hearing is reasonably based in reality, is positive.
Yeah, and a look back, I think would be too late. I'm just curious, using 4A as an example, you know, what would the numbers be if 4A didn't materialize and we didn't develop the east side of 93 the way that you're planning on doing it?
Yeah, I think, I think they'd be different. And, and they'd be different because, as we explained in the traffic analysis, and as we're going to build into the, the approval document, we actually had a good discussion about this on Monday in peer review, we, we do need to build in the what if it doesn't happen scenario, so that everyone who, you know, on both sides of the table understands what's possible and what isn't, if that funding doesn't come through, if the exit doesn't come through. I mean, are, are we basing some assumptions that it will happen? Sure. But, but we all recognize that it may not.
Sure. So, so with that said, is there any intent to go back and look at this analysis without exit 4A happening?
We, we don't presently have that intention, because we're taking a snapshot, conceptual, 20-year build out. We think it's going to happen. This is a, a positive projection from this point forward. Thank you.
It's something we probably can look either on an annual basis as this develops, and then compare to, you know, the analysis that we had, or like a site plan, site plan, site plan type thing, and as we go from site plan to site plan, take a look at where we are at, you know, as far as...
But in terms of plot?
To, to follow on from Lynn's point, I mean, Lynn's making that, are we going to get that from you for the, for the, you know, for the master plan? I'm going to have a very hard time going through this and saying, what's the worst-case scenario, without that information at hand. And I, I, it's not that, you know, I don't say that it wouldn't, you know, I just want to have clear eyes about that. I want to be clear understanding of what consequences of our decision may be, and understanding, you know, some of the nuances here. And there, I don't want to have an infinite number of variable conditions, but I think that we know there's certain ones that could or couldn't happen. There's, there's a couple of binary switches here, that I really think we should have some, some of that information at hand for us to make, you know, a clear ride decision.
Okay, well, let, let us take that back. As you correctly predicted, one of our considerations would be the, the slide into an infinite number of changing variables and assumptions that I, I don't think would be helpful for anybody at this point.
It was tough enough to get through this, Harry.
Right, right. Would you like 100 versions?
No, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just to your point on, on a look back, I think a look back's too late, once again, you know, we're looking at this, as Mr. Pollak says, to, as a supplement to approve or not the master plan. And I think, you know, that's where I would like the information upfront versus a year down the road, or five years down the road.
Okay.
Cynthia?
Yeah, Cynthia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing we did talk about on Monday when we had our marathon meeting is with every development proposal, and you heard that again tonight, you're going to have an update to the traffic impact analysis. The current regulations already allow a fiscal impact analysis for each project. You can require or request the same as this goes, so the, you are getting a snapshot before you go to the next level. And that could be worked into the development agreement.
Question, what would, what impact would that have on those site plans that had come before with that? Would it, would it be, they'd be compelled for it to be tax positive if it has a dire financial impact, or?
Up to you.
Thanks for throwing that buck over.
Though, within the law, I mean, if we have a, for example, we couldn't say, you can't do this because it's not tax positive if you're allowed to do that under the law.
Have to defer to council on that.
Town council, maybe.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mike maybe has something to offer about that, but I haven't looked at that specific issue, so I, I don't really want to make a comment at this point and turn out to be wrong.
Well, we could, but you could say, well, wait a minute, that's against the law, right? And do we want to put ourselves in that position? I don't need to get into this discussion, but...
I think at this point, we probably have to exercise caution, and how to express it, probably.
Sure.
I, I understand, I'm just not certain of the answer.
I'm not going to hold you to it.
I don't know if anyone is...
In that case, I think it may be illegal. I really don't, I really, I'm guessing at this point, but I don't think that's helpful.
I think that would be something for, to be hashed out with town council on the town agreement.
I, I know, it's way down the road. I mean, it's not something...
Well, it needs to be, it's the next bit we're going to get.
If a question comes, you know, how much...
It's rushing at us.
Is that you all set, Lynn?
I'm all set.
Sounds like we need fiscal flexibility. I, I have some of the same concerns that Lynn and Chris raised, but, because I think about, I think about our own CIP, you know, we're at a point where the fire department, our central station, you know, we, we need improvements there now, and we need more firemen now. And I think about all of this coming down the pike, obviously, that's, you know, there's going to be plenty of strain on fire department, police department, Public Works. And I know it's our responsibility where we're at now in London Dairy, as far as our fire department, but I know we have needs now, and I'm concerned about adding more in a, in a fiscal sense. So, right off the bat, I feel like the first, one of the, one of the first areas that gets built will probably put a strain on us with the fire department, right off the bat. So, and then we talk about possibly needing, you know, a ladder truck and needing, you know. So, I'm concerned about that balance of fiscal responsibility too, especially just getting started, if we're more in the red than we are in the positive. So I, I don't know what the answer to that is. I, I guess, I guess if there's any kind of flexibility in development agreement about, about that, I guess that's what we, sounds like what we might be looking for. And I don't, I don't know much about development agreements, but it sounds like we need a cushion. We need, you know, or we need something to be able to say, okay, site plan's coming in, oh, this is a lot more than we expected, we're not prepared for this, how, how can we afford to back that up? That would be my concern. And I know that this is the best guess scenario, this analysis is the best guess scenario, that, you know, there's only so much that you can plan out, and then what comes in. We don't know what, exactly what's coming in, we don't know what the exact needs are going to be. So, of course, the criteria's going to change. So, I guess, I guess as, as one planning board member, I would be a lot more comfortable if there was a flexibility in the development agreement, if there was major changes along the way, in a fiscal sense. That's my concern as well. So, that's all I got for now.
Okay. Anyone for the public, or any of our officials have any, oh, Tom? Yes, you've been too quiet.
Sorry for being late. I apologize if I asked. Can I have some questions? I apologize if this has already been covered. Refer to your page 21 of your report. Fire department capital cost.
Right.
You have a table in there, table 23, which you come up with a calculation of $285,000 in annual capital costs to the fire department, based on response calls and things like that. And here's my, my question. This building costs 4 million dollars, okay, I think. You know, over 20 years, that might be $200,000 a year. But you don't get to build a building over a 20-year period. You don't get to spend $200,000 for that wall, or this room, or that ceiling. You, you, you know, maybe year three, bang, $4 million. So, I, I'm not sure what this tells me, I guess, and why it's even applicable. Because at some point, for example, with, with calls, at some point, and I don't know what that point is, but the current dispatch system may be overloaded and it's got to be replaced. We don't get the choice of paying for it in installments over 20 years. It's, it's at, it might be a capacity now, we need a new system now to handle 500 more calls annually. And, and I, and I'm not sure, maybe it's 500 annually every year, maybe, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but maybe just 500 total.
What I tried, what I, what I wanted to do was, because we don't know timing, was building cash flows throughout this period, so that you could either have them in a reserve fund, so when the trigger was tipped, that there would be funds available. And also, I built in interest rates in case there were, you know, portions of it would be paid for with the reserve fund, and then portions of it would be financed. Because, you know, trying to build in the bumpiness of the analysis of, in particular, what year would trigger something, we don't know at this point. But I wanted over the, the time period, to be able at the current inventory that's currently serving London Dairy, if it had to essentially be replaced, because what I've done is do a replacement approach. a replacement approach for the proportionate share of London Dairy if they had to replace everything, here's the annual cash flows that would be assigned for that replacement value so that those cash flows are built in each, in every, every year. Does that, does that make sense?
Well, well, I, I see what you're saying, but I, I guess my problem is this. You're comparing it, that expenditure or suggesting that it can be funded in a tax-positive manner 20 years from today when Woodmont is completely built out and we're collecting taxes from everybody, every piece of property there. Now, I guess my question is, what happens in year seven, for example, when a third of Woodmont is, you know, now paying taxes, but we need a new building for whatever reason, a new capital, another fire station, for example? You see my point that at that point, your analysis breaks down, at least in my view?
And I think those types of timing issues were what the group was just kind of discussing before you came in about different options and in terms of a periodic analysis to stay in front of that type of issue in terms of how the, the development is progressing.
Okay, but so I, I guess one of the other parts of this is things just don't move in a straight line. They go up and down. And while ultimately 20 years from now, it may be tax-positive, during the intervening 20 years, there could be some periods of tax-negative. Would you agree with that?
There... It, it, it depends. I mean, I, I can't really answer that question because that would be, as Mr. Davies was saying, a whole set of variable assumptions that would create that catastrophic event the same way I could create another scenario where we could have, draw a corporate headquarters in it and an anchor tenant and get construction financing on a major portion of the commercial on the front end and you would have front-end reserves built in. So, you know, we could see a deceleration or depending on timing and attractiveness of this project to the market, you could hit, hit the market at that perfect timing where you could capitalize on, on that opportunity. So that's where I, I don't want to skew it on either end because I think, you know, in my opinion, that might be misleading. I understand what y'all are trying to do to protect the town's interests, but I, I can't predict either one.
I, I understand that. And that, and that's kind of a cause of my concern is that, you know, isn't it, it's an educated guess?
At some point, it will become more predictable. You know, right now, we have a, a concept plan and this is, this is a very, I know this is tough for everyone dealing with this, but this is really common to, to deal with fiscal impact analysis at various stages of a large-scale project like this. And, and we're having to deal with a concept that we all don't quite know exactly what it looks like, but we know a lot of key components that we know are, are need to be in place for it to be successful. At the site plan review phase, there will be more information. We'll have more market conditions. We'll have a closer picture of, of what is going to happen next. So, as the development progresses, what it kind of may feel like a crystal ball won't feel like that as, as you go forward because for this thing to, to get legs, it, we will, you will have more, a lot more information about what is actually going to occur. You know, the developer will be working to attract, for example, the anchor tenants. So there will, you know, there will be more information that unfolds at each stage of the game compared to what we have now, if that answers your question.
Well, it, it does to some extent, but I, one of my concerns is, is when there's this report that concludes, you know, with some reasonable certainty that this is a tax-positive project, that's 20 years from today. And that's a long time for a taxpayer in this town and maybe he's writing the seven years it's not tax-positive or the three years it's not tax-positive. So I don't want to mislead people that are watching or reading this report. And what I'm looking to, to find out is, and I understand the problem of, you know, multiple variations of this report, but what, what I think is important is to see, maybe on a graph level, you know, does it go straight up? Are we always talking about tax-positive? Can we say that? Or are we going to have peaks and valleys?
You can take a look at page 33, appendix table 1A, which again, like everything else we've talked about, is, is a projection based upon current...
And if I was a rabbit, I could actually see these little... No, no, I got it. It's just, it's a little small for me.
It is a little small for me too, but, but, but the projections on a year-to-year, over 20-year basis are, are there. And I guess, you know, this is a good discussion, but what I would say is that just like planning and zoning and master planning generally are based upon educated, you know, smart projections based upon experiences in, in this community as well as others, you, our mission with fiscal impact was no different. Are, are we able to predict that this development will have a net positive impact based upon some reasonable assumptions of what's built into the master plan? The combination of uses that are offered, the percentages of commercial residential or, I should say residential, non-residential? Is it a positive picture that we're painting? And the conclusion at this point, looking forward, is yes. We can certainly think of a variable number of scenarios where that goes sideways or, or is simply not following what our projection is. And, and maybe we can build in some ability to revisit that, whether it's at the site plan level. I, I want to look into that more before, before we suggest that that's an appropriate time to do it, but the current projection is yes. And that might be the best that we can or should do for this point in time.
Next question I had was regarding school. And I, I saw the revenue projections, but I didn't see any expenditure increases. And maybe I'm just missing something there, but...
On, let's see, I'm looking in, Mr. Peter Kuro at the school district compared the school impact analysis and it's in a separate memorandum. So, and it's on table five on the, I, mine's double-sided, but it's in, on table five, the last page of the analysis.
If you could give me the date on the first page.
May 20th, 2013.
It's at the very back of the appendices.
So what, in, in summary, what table five is doing, we have our school district property tax collections, the annual operating cost as projected by the school district, and then the annual capital costs.
And from what, what I read about that, that's, appears to be just the cost of 25 teachers or something to that effect?
It's the school district's cost of absorbing the Woodmont, Woodmont Commons Public School System into the available capacity existing within the school district.
Okay, so that's anticipating either a flat or a decline, continued decline in current school population?
Not, it's my understanding that's based on available capacity today. With, we know, and I had mentioned this earlier, beginning in September, I believe there are going to be about 60 hookset students being brought into the high school. And so that would, if Woodmont Commons had 60 high school children, they would be being served by the high school set hookset. But there's a, based on my discussions with the school district, there is significant available capacity. And their analysis of the incremental cost in serving this, the number of school children projected for Woodmont Commons, which they developed those student generation rates, this is the amount of extra staff, extra capital cost. And it's not only teachers, but bus, bus staff, other general administrative staff associated. They went in with an all-in approach in calculating the incremental cost of, of serving the students.
And is it fair to say you assumed that because there's excess capacity that won't be exceeded by the additional Woodmont children, that there would be no need for any at all capital cost increases to the school?
Their capital costs are included in table five.
352,000, total annual capital cost.
Yes, sir.
And what would that be for?
Additional, a few additional classrooms, according to Mr. Kuro's analysis.
Okay. If I could direct you to page 10 of your report, it's motor vehicle permit fees. And I guess it's just a... My, my question is, if you could explain why you're doing it on a per capita basis versus, or this is on your original report, I'm sorry.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
The, typically, if I had a further breakdown of all the different housing unit types, I would look at how many vehicles per household would be generated by each type of housing unit and look at a per-vehicle permit fee generated. Essentially, I get to the same point by doing it on a per capita basis because each type of unit is going to have a different number of persons associated with it. So it's kind of the cost accounting method, whether you're going to use household, number of housing unit is the denominator based on the, the number of housing units in the town today or a number of population. You, you end up at the same point because what I've done is taken current permit fee revenue divided by town population and then multiplied that by Woodmont Commons. So assuming that Woodmont Commons would have about the same proportionate number of vehicles valued accordingly as the town today, then that's how the revenue would be generated. I, I know it's not calculated on a per-person basis and that's not how it's figured, but that was a reasonable proxy.
So, based on this, are you estimating that be this 3,604 cars that are going to be?
No, persons.
Okay, but how many cars? Because...
Well, but what I did, I took existing revenue divided by town population to get a per capita.
Okay.
So to, another way I would, could have done it would be total vehicle permit revenue divided by number of vehicles in the town.
Do you happen to know that? How many vehicles?
I know, I think it's published in your annual caper, the number of vehicles. What I don't know in, is trying to project based on each of the 1,300 primary residence, primary residential units, whether, which ones would have two cars, which ones would have 2.1, which would have 1.2. So we get to the same point by using a population approach as we would because we've considered the denominator consistently.
Okay, so maybe I'm just not getting it, but so if we're using the same approach as population, does that mean we're going to have 3,600 cars in the Woodmont development?
No, because, let me give you an example. Let's say the revenue today, there are 10,000 cars in the town, then that would have, then we would calculate a revenue per, per car. But, but let's say revenue divided by 30,000 population, it's going to be a much lower number calculating it on a per-person basis than let's say on a per-vehicle basis. So, we're, we're doing it proportionate to the num, to the, revenue is proportionate to the population.
Okay. Tom?
Tom, to your question though, could I just, could, I'm wondering if that's a valid assumption only because the types of residents that you're proposing in Woodmont are not the types of residents we currently have in London Dairy. So is it reasonable to expect that there will be that number of cars per person to generate that revenue?
You know, probably a, a bigger trigger to, for house, for, we're going to have a mixture of housing units, house, housing values within Woodmont Commons. And housing values are linked to household income. So I don't think it, it would be a stretch or the number is materially off to think that the mixture of housing units and the mixture of car ownership and the, and the, the mixture of household income would be so extremely different in Woodmont Commons is what's in London Dairy today that would cause that number to be materially off. If you want me to perform some type of alternative analysis, I'll be happy to, but, but I'm comfortable that we end up in, in proportionate allocation.
And Tom, to your question too, four or five years ago, we asked the question, the staff about the vehicle registrations in town compared to the population and it was really scary how close it was, one-to-one. One vehicle registration, which included cars, motorcycles, boats, trailers, to, you know, per person in town, so...
Well, the, one other observation that should be made is that, that those numbers are skewed also by a large entity to the north of us.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
All of the rental car agencies register in London Dairy.
Yep.
So there's a huge offset there that kind of skews numbers for us. So I'm not sure whether that was brought up. Very good point, Chris. So the 900, just to your point, the 943,000 revenue, that's a, at the, at final build-out per year?
Correct.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Still on page 10, under the expenditure assumptions. It says, because certain fiscal expenditure impacts use a modified per capita full-time equivalent of population approach, population employment projections were developed as follows. Is that expenditure assumption also used to figure out cost increases to the general town government?
Only, we discussed this earlier, only if you'll flip over to the general government tab on page 14, table 12. And within the general government tab, that approach was used on finance, the assessing department, information technology, zoning, and a case study approach was used on community development. So although community development was, is within general government, that a, a different approach was used for it.
I'm just wondering what the relevance is of a per capita approach to a lot of these costs? And let's look around the room here. If, if 10 people get up and leave the room, the light bill doesn't go down here. So I'm just not sure what the per capita cost is.
Well, you know, I guess a, a different way of explaining it. We know through looking at trend information over time in local government budgets, some are, are fairly fixed or it can take a significant amount of a population change to influence that particular line item on a budget. Others for, for example, the assessing department, if there are more properties to assess, the finance department, if there are more customer accounts to react to, there, there may not be a one-on-one level of service change as the population grows, but it's a typical and common approach used to have some measure of trying to predict demand on those service departments by saying if it's, if it takes us a staff of 10 to serve our population today, then we're going to consider, we're going to need X number proportionate to our population employment growth to consent, to continue serving in the future.
And do you have, and I apologize for not knowing this, what you think the residential increase will be from Woodmont? Is it 3,604?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
On table 12? On page 14?
Yes.
And I, I agree with you that at some, you know, things just don't move in a straight line, but at some point... line, but at some point, you do hit, we have to do something. And just to give you an idea, I think now for twelve years, the town's employee population hasn't varied by more than two consistently. So what, what to me that suggests is that they're at maximum capacity for doing things. And based on the twenty-six thousand person current population, the thirty-six hundred is about fourteen percent increase. Don't you think at that point, it's no longer just a per-capita, and that we now have to do something?
Well, you know, part of what we need to do in fiscal impact is that it needs to be fair, equitable, and proportionate. You can't, if there is an existing deficiency that, that's already existing, the, the new development can't absorb an existing deficiency and, and serve, so...
But with all due respect, there isn't a deficiency now, it's just at the tipping point.
But where we, but what we did was then establish a level of service that in essence is higher, because we've had a historic level of population growth where we haven't had any staff, and yet this, this analysis is saying, but we're going to vary the way we've handled general government functions, for example, in the past, and not hiring staff. We've incorporating additional staff and additional expenses to Woodmont Commons, then, for example, another existing development has come on board, and you didn't hire staff, and Woodmont Commons were saying we will.
What if there was some kind of historic study that said, fire department dispatches, the max on average for the state, they can handle twenty-five hundred calls a year, and then they just, they're not, they're not capable of doing anything more. All right? And we're at twenty-five hundred calls, and this development comes in, and your projection is, that's five hundred more calls. You telling me that we just have to, that Woodmont can only be assessed per capita, and not for maybe paying for a new dispatch system that through technology can now handle four thousand calls?
But I think that's where for recreation, library, community development, building, fire, and police, we didn't use a functional population. You know, the, the police department made their own assessment of capital and operating cost of the fire department. We tried to limit that approach to at least give recognition to those departments are going to have increased demand that has not yet filtered through the town's existing budget from previous projects, but we're going to see that. But for the departments of the town that are, are most sensitive, the department heads made their assessments of those needs.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, excellent point.
One quick question to Tom's question earlier about infrastructure. Is it safe to assume, and, and I know where Tom, I think where Tom was going was around, when do we build, and usually it's, it's upfront. Is it safe to assume that, that infrastructure requirements are going to be more front-end loaded than, say, you know, towards the end of the project?
I don't know that that was something that you focused on, but I think, I think the answer is yes, you have to develop the capacity to put the density online.
So if that, if that's the case, then, was that considered in this, this document? That, and, and I, what I've heard so far with the board is the concern that you, you painted a very nice picture about being cash flow positive, basically, from day one. But if I look at what, if we agree that infrastructure costs are going to be front-end loaded, regardless of what type of building goes in first, and, and I think it was said earlier, fire truck that, that can go over, you know, the top of a building to make sure it can spare enough water somewhere, or to the height of a building that's five stories high that's being, you know, proposed, we're still going to have to consume, you know, one-plus-million-dollar fire truck, and then we're going to have to put that fire truck somewhere, so we're going to have to put it in, in a facility somewhere, which we're going to have to build, that will probably be, I don't know, how much did it cost to build the fire department either on one oh two, or, or...
Two point five.
This is a one point six.
One point six, two point five.
We got a grant, I think, for it also.
So, you know, you see where all of a sudden, we're into three, four million dollars for a large building, for a fire truck only. So, did you consider front-end loading of infrastructure and the services that are going to be required as, as this build-out happens? And does that, if, if not, could we have those numbers, and does that actually make it cash flow negative for, I think Tom used the number seven years, which is a third of the project?
Well, I think that's where we go back to the dilemma that we're in right now, at a conceptual phase, because we can base a twenty-year build-out on a thousand set of variables, on what we think development's going to look like, that, that may or may not have sufficient funds built to have a three hundred thousand surplus over a three-year period that would pay for a million-dollar fire truck.
But wouldn't it be safe to assume, again, going back to the fact that infrastructure would have to be built out, and I know I use the word phases, but I'm going to assume that everything that is to the south of Gilcrest will be developed first, isn't that a pretty good starting point to kind of get a gauge for what it's going to cost in infrastructure to build that particular part of the project out?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, when you're saying infrastructure, I'm not sure we're talking the same language.
Town, town costs, you know, again, fire trucks, buildings.
Fire, police.
Fire, police, anything that's going to cost us money.
Public works.
Public works, roads, all those things that are going to be associated. Again, I'm assuming that those infrastructure requirements are going to be front-end loaded and not back-end loaded.
You know, I think, number one, the report that you've been hearing about does have a budget for capital equipment purchases for fire and other departments.
But to Tom's point...
Yeah, I understand.
It's, it's loaded over time, right?
Right.
So, you know, again, you don't, you don't buy a fire truck in pieces, you don't buy the wheels, then the, the hose, right?
Right.
You, you have to buy the whole thing, and then we got to figure out how to, how to pay for that.
I can envision any number of scenarios occurring. One is that the projection occurs the, the way it is calculated today, and this report turns out to be tracking very nicely on, on how the development moves forward. Another scenario is that we become ahead of the analysis, and things like impact fees, things like off-site exactions, things like, you know, paying a prorata share of what the community expends on capital improvements becomes part of every site plan approval, just like is available, I don't know if it's available right now, but has been in the past in the town. You know, another scenario is that with regard to road building, we've been having a good discussion about building those cost components into the development agreement. And there's been a number of opinions as to how that ought to work, and I think we're coming to something that the board's going to appreciate. But, you know, all of this comes back to the same point, which is, you make a projection based upon some absorption rate, you based, based upon some projection of, of cost and need, and the, the mission here was to show that there was a reasonable projection, a reasonable certainty, somebody used that term, that the development would be positive. And I don't, I don't know that we can do better than that right now, without going down the road of every infinite scenario.
I don't think we're asking for infinite scenarios. Again, I, I think the scenario that I painted to you, simply knowing that we would develop, or you would develop, and, and we would, you know, be part of as, as the town, the, the area which is south of Gilcrest, right?
What, east of...
Am I right?
South of Pillsbury?
Pills, excuse me, south of Pillsbury. Excuse me for those at home, I apologize. South of Pillsbury would be developed first, so would, would it be, would it be a, a safe assumption that you'd have to calculate in those infrastructure costs to at least support something like that? And, and were those actually included in that phase of the build-out?
Well, what's interesting about that is that this, the areas south of Pillsbury are likely to be more commercially oriented, and so you may very well be ahead of your prorata projection at that point, and you may be able to pick up those additional infrastructure costs without going askew on your capital, or your fiscal impact analysis.
I, I can take it a step further.
Sure.
I'm here today saying I'm going to build a lot of my roads in my project. The town is going out and getting tiger grants to build roads for other people, and they're going to pay for it. Do I get credit for the roads that I build? Are you going to give me credit for that? Or, or, or are you going, are you going to have a quid pro quo in the community? I'm standing here today, I'm here today, I'm trying to propose a, a project, we've tried to give you the best analysis we can, and yet I'm looking at an inequity in the community on my project, that, that the town is imposing on the other side of town, that gives a gift to developers. It's to build a road, and they'll come. Okay, that's fine, the community's doing that. You want to build my roads and I'll come? I don't think that's quite an equal basis for what we're doing here yet, and yet we've always been positive, we're trying to show you that we're always a positive thing, and that we're step, taking the steps forward to show you that we're going to be positive. Plus, we're here today. We're not, we're not saying spend eight million dollars building a road with no infrastructure in it. We're saying, we're here today, and we're going to be here, and we're going to be cash positive to the community. And we haven't, we haven't done the development agreement yet, but I'm sure there's some quid pro quo in there. But if you're going to say to me that I'm the generator and the cure for all the ills in the community, and the funding, well, the example is, is you spent four million dollars here. You didn't pay cash for it, you bonded it. You bonded it, you built it, and you're paying for it. So if, you can understand my quandary when, when, when the community is going out and, and trying to get financial aid for other developments of a thousand acres in the community, and I'm here with six hundred and forty, and I'm before you, and I'm trying to show you that I'm cash positive, that I've spent my money, and that I'm here today. I don't know.
And, and I...
You know, I mean, we could do this all day long.
No, I understand that, but I, I'm just thinking that there's questions of this report, and I think I'm entitled to ask.
Well, I'm not saying that you're not. I, I agree with you, and I, and I agree, some good discussion has come from this tonight as well. And I think, and I think that's something that everybody has to take away from here tonight, and come back with those answers. We can answer some of those questions, but the board also has to look at this in a fair and equitable basis as well. Have we met the conditions, and have we shown you that we're cash positive? I think, I think, as a, as a developer, that we're going to be cash positive, so cash positive on the front end, that the community's going to have to make a decision and, and be careful not to overspend the revenues coming in for the future, when, when it hits a flat rate. And I think that's something you have to consider as well.
And, and that would be fine, but I don't think that anybody on this board would be doing their duty if we just sat here and, you know, stamped this and said approved.
I, I understand, but I, I'm just trying to tell...
And I understand your...
It's my viewpoint as well.
No, no, exactly, and I understand your frustration, but...
Sure.
But, you know, bear in mind that...
I understand.
You know, there's a report here, and there's some broad assumptions over a twenty-year period that, you know...
I understand, but, and I also understand that your consultant raised some very poignant points tonight as well, and they have to be considered. But I think overall, the consensus of RKG and the consensus here, no matter how they get there, this is a cash positive project. And, you know, whether you, whether, you have to decide whether they're right or wrong, both of them, because they're both telling you, regardless of the level that there's a ca, that this is probably, probably a cash positive project. So, that's all I've got to say tonight.
Okay. I'd like to move on and get some input from the public, and I know John has something to say, and he can use the microphone right down here. Or that one, too.
Hi, John Farrell, for Hancock Drive, Town Council. In your analysis, I think there is, on the school side, in listening to what Mr. Kuro prepared for you, I think there's some history missing. We're about a thousand students down in the last five or six years, and the, with your development, right now, Londonderry's getting older. With your development, I think this will become a destination, and the town will reverse and start getting younger again, which means that the homes will rotate, the children will come back in. So while he may have existing capacity now, he won't twenty years from now, really because of your development, because the town will get younger. We can handle maybe six thousand students now, I think that number's right. So I think you have to really look a little bit harder at the analysis, and not consider what's only happened in the last five years. I think you have to look and go back to see how we grew, and I think you're going to have that same repetitive piece happen in the future. You may still be tax positive, I don't know what the numbers are going to be, but I would think the school board will probably say to the superintendent that the assumptions made need to be relooked at. So that's my only statement.
A point, if I can just follow up. We have been sitting on a bubble because of the growth that we've had, and you are right, we, we are in a decline over the last four to five years, so if you have been using those numbers and you're using those as trends, you will see that, and that, that looks like it's going that way. But I, I, I agree with you, if things turn around and we become a, a more, a town that's more positive for younger folks to come in, we will see that reversal.
So just think about that as you look at your analysis. That's my only statement. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mike?
Mike Speltz, Sugar Plum Lane, eighteen. My compliments to the, all those that have spoken tonight, because I spent a few hours looking at this, and I can say that just about everything that I came up with in my review, the report, someone's already covered, so I, I won't repeat that. I would only summarize that what we have said tonight really is that there are some glaring sensitivities here. So we have one data point in time at the twenty-year mark, and we have identified a lot of sensitivities that could change the bottom line of that report, and the report's very open, it starts by saying, these are estimates, they're all based on what's happening in two thousand and thirteen, and as Chairman Farrell just pointed out, this year isn't necessarily a typical year. We have declining student population, we, I would say, you know, Tom says we're at capacity, I would say we have a, a, a town budget where we have, we've cut into the meat a little bit. I know there's people, there's room to agree or disagree about that, but we have based all of our assumptions on this year's budget, and, and that may not be typical in terms of what the town really needs to do to satisfy the needs of its people. So my suggestion would be this, that, that we have two data points to look at. One, the best guess that we were presented tonight, and secondly, a worst-case estimate that RKG could prepare for us, that said, if some of these sensitivities were to materialize, how bad would it be? Now, even if that number comes back as being tax-negative, doesn't mean that we wouldn't want to approve this project, but it gives you a measure of the risk that you're facing when you say, yeah, it looks like it's going to be tax-positive. And just a few examples, let's say that the, the, the square foot value assigned to commercial retail space is about ten percent off, that the home value isn't three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, it's about ten percent less. That would be a drop in, in valuation of about one point eight million, I'm sorry, about eighty-six, eighty-seven million, and a, and a drop in tax revenue of about one point eight million. John has pointed out that, that we could have some significant increases in the cost of maintaining these roads, can't even identify yet what they are, I'll have to make some educated guesses. I, I looked at what would happen if the, if there was no four A, there was no three hundred and fifty thousand square feet of retail space, probably a hit of about six hundred thousand on, on the tax revenue, and if that retail space was, was, was replaced with residential housing, obviously even worse. And I think the biggest elephant in the room altogether would be, what if the breakdown of seventy percent residential tax revenue, thirty percent commercial tax revenue doesn't quite work out? What if it turns out that it's eighty percent residential and twenty percent commercial? The flexibility that's in the, the proposal right now would certainly allow that to happen. What would that do to our, our fiscal impact? I think it would be very significant, because we all know that, that residential is tax-negative and commercial's tax-positive. So I think it would be prudent to spend the little extra money it would take, and I apologize for saying little, but...
[laughing]
To, to, to do... to, to, to do a, a, a worst-case analysis, to say, we think we're okay, but if everything goes to hell in a handbasket, and anyone that's lived here between two thousand seven and today knows that can happen, that we have kind of a assessment of how much of a risk we're taking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Ian.
There were, Anne Champa, twenty-eight, Wedgewood. There was, there was a lot of information to go over this time. And I hope that the public can be given a copy through the website of the condensed versions shown on the screen here, like this, because I don't think that's in the regular documents that were-
No, that's not in the regular-
This was just handed to us this evening, but we will put it up tomorrow.
Thanks.
These are all snapshots from the report.
Right.
It's all in the report.
Yeah, everything there you can find in the report also.
Right, I know, but for the general public that doesn't wanna go through all the information, this was a nice slideshow that, that might have, you know, benefit them also. I had some questions. There were a lot of, of my questions answered tonight, but I just had a few here-and-there small questions. I'll start out with the police department. I noticed that there were nine police officers, two telecommunications personnel, and two records personnel, personnel, and I guess four patrol vehicles. And it said the annual cost at build-out in twenty years would be about nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for that year, year twenty. I'm not trying to be piggy here, but I thought we just voted for spending a hundred thousand dollars on one school resource or officer. Would the costs of that position be comparable to the police officers stationed in Woodmont or patrolling Woodmont or accounted for here?
Well, you couldn't answer that. I don't know how the patrolling is going to occur.
Well, it says for nine police officers. I was just, you know, we just voted in a hundred thousand for one, for the school, so it seems like the cost would be more than, and that doesn't even include the other four personnel and, you know, I'm just wondering.
The police department prepared all the cost estimates, and included in their analysis was a first-year officer with an annual escalating for as that officer became more experienced, training costs included. So, I, I think from my understanding and reviewing their analysis, they did consider the level of position and types of staffing in, in, in full in their analysis.
Okay, I just want, I just wanted that clarified, because I know how much we're spending for one, how much we just voted in for one. I had another question on, let's see, I had a lot more, and I was crossing them out as we're going through. The fire department, the annual projected response calls are about a little less than one point five per day. I think that would be on page twenty-one. And it could save me a lot of time asking these questions if, if all this information was verified by the, the various town departments.
I believe that's where all the information came from, is from them.
The, the fire response calls are published in-
Could you, I'm sorry, could you come to the microphone?
Annual, um, response calls for the fire department are published in the comprehensive annual financial report each year for the town and dependent the statistical section, and that's where all the estimates came from. And I think what the response calls, oh, I need to put my glasses on, are, I believe, in table on page nineteen, under the operating costs. I'm, I'm sorry, under the fire department operating statistics.
I, I see it on page twenty-one.
On, on table nineteen, or, in, in those, on at the top of table nineteen, that data, those data came directly from the annual financial reports of the town for two thousand three, two thousand six, and two thousand twelve.
Okay, do you see the five hundred and forty-six? Is that what you're looking at?
right, if you wanna look at table nineteen.
Okay.
There you go. So, these are the actual historical fire department response rates coming from the annual report.
So, I'll definitely recheck that. Thank you for pointing that out to me. I also had a question, and, let's see. The infrastructure costs, for example, to the water system, the sewer system, and roads, et cetera, outside Woodmont during the initial development, and, and after that, was that considered in this document, or should it be considered in it?
The, my scope of work was limited to the general fund, because the, for the purpose of how this analysis is fitting to the rezoning, the question was how will the infrastructure affect the general property taxes in the general fund? So, what you just, the, the water and sewer are not part of the general fund operations.
Okay, Jessica, we talked about it in the past, about, for example, in one oh-two and maybe Gilcrest Road, the improvements that might need to be done to those areas. They're outside Woodmont, but would my be the impetus to having those systems changed? And I was just wondering if that was included or accounted for in any way?
Now, Lynn brought that up earlier.
Oh, they're not accounted for.
That was one of his questions.
Yeah, they're not. The sewer is separate accounting from the town's general fund, so therefore it doesn't affect the tax rate.
You're saying it doesn't?
Doesn't affect the tax rate.
Where would it be accounted for?
The users pay for it.
Use fees and hookup fees.
Right, but that's for the, for example, the, the water systems and other thing like that that were, that might be increased in size, the piping and everything along the road to accommodate the extra capacity?
It would be picked up by hookup fees, and then there's a, a monthly bill you get for the water you use.
You don't pay through that, through taxes.
Taxes, that's not part of your ta, tax rate.
But I thought that was part of the infrastructure talks we had.
It's not, we're talking about tax rate, not, uh-
Okay. I just wanna clarify for myself. I appreciate that.
I, I think it will have, it'll have a fiscal impact, but not on the general taxpayer. It will be on those who are subscribers to the water system.
Okay.
It'll be the specific user of it, but the cost occurred to them, not the taxpayer.
I thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Well, gentleman back there hasn't spoken yet, Mike, so I'll listen to him first. And name and address, please.
John Wilson.
Uh, you need to come to the microphone, please.
John Wilson, Tranquil Drive. The analysis that was done, the financial analysis, I think was, was well-done, interesting, and a good intellectual piece of work. But the, the fundamental problem that it is trying to address, I think it's essentially no analysis will address that and give these people the comfort they need in terms of the financial risk to the town. Okay, the town is and should be risk-averse, okay? So, there's two things about this project that I think the voters of town are primarily interested in. Some people will switch them around. First one, I think, is, is this gonna cost me any money in form of taxes? And the second piece is, how is this gonna change the quality of my life living now? This analysis, okay, is, if this project was five years, this becomes relatively simple. But over a twenty-year period, no one, no one can sit here and say with any degree of certainty what that six hundred acres is gonna look like twenty years from now. In addition to that, the, this infamous, what is it, four A exit is so key to this whole thing that not knowing what's gonna happen with that makes all this financial work and these projections irrelevant. Because I don't even know if the project is viable without the exit. So, it's, I think, instead of worrying about how to make that analysis better, okay, which you can't, okay? I think the key is to work on the risk issue. How do you get to a point where you have mitigated the risk? Is it through, I don't know, some form of impact fees that are running forward? Is it on the housing side? Is it we have, that we have zoning in the town now, I believe, that triggers when you can build houses, and when you can't build houses? Can that be modified? Do you do it in the form of the ordinances we have? Do you build those into the agreement, okay? But you're never gonna get comfortable at this point in time with this financial analysis. It just pin, it just kinda highlighted for me the futility of trying to do it now. Because you can't, you can't. Now, Mr. Pollack thinks it's a reasonable analysis. And if I was on that side of the table, I would say it was a reasonable analysis. But if somebody were to come to me and wanted me to invest in this, and they said, here's what you, this tax, the net tax value of this, this is what you're gonna get for this, for your investment. And I look at these, one plan, no, no sensitivity analysis in any of these numbers. And then, as we're going through the conversation, he says, oh, by the way, we also have to have an exit bill, which we are not building, okay? In order to get to these, that, I mean, you can't, there's too many variables in this. You can't do this at this point in time. So, and you'll never be able to do this really from a financial point of view analysis. So, you have to work on mitigating the risk in the agreements or through the ordinances of town, because you can't take on huge tax risk. I mean, the people just won't go for it. And then, the other issue is the quality of life, which, I mean, that's probably a discussion for another time. But I know what got me here tonight was I saw in the, and I haven't been paying much attention to this, really, because I frankly was thinking, this probably thing is definitely never gonna happen. But I happened to see the article in the paper about, I guess it's Gilcrest Road, and the idea of, you know, turning those, that front section, what is it, C-nine or C-eight or whatever, into a, to a park or whatever? So, I finally got up, went on the website, and I went out and looked at the plans. And the first thing that struck me about the plans was that the egress from this development, okay, on the south side, and probably the north side, is highly dependent on that exit, okay? And the, and the, if I understand it right, the ways to get out of this development to the south are, looks like they're going to extend the road that goes up to the President de Mola's shopping center. I assume they would make that four lanes up into the development, okay? That would, that would help. But the only other way out is to go down Gilcrest Road. And, and it seems to me, if you take the number of residential properties that are gonna be in there, and you, and you say, okay, well, if we're gonna have that many households in here, and this was typically, you know, one acre lot, okay? How big of an area would that encompass on Londondale presently? And it's a pretty large area of Londondale on the south, on the, just west of, just west of, of Gilcrest, going west. That has to be emptied out, but you're gonna have to empty it out on Gilcrest Road. Now, if you don't have that exit, it seems to me it's pretty, it's almost a certainty that Gilcrest has to be made four lanes, okay? So, you may get a, a buffer of fifty feet, but, but Gilcrest Road turns into a four-lane highway. And from my perspective, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be in a position, because this development's being built, to say, what time of day is it, okay? Whether or not I'm gonna drive up Gilcrest Road or on the, on the east side of one oh-two. But there's, this development, depending on how it goes in, is gonna affect everybody west of Gilcrest Road. And in addition to that, okay, what you do with this development is what you're gonna have to do in the future with the rest of them, because this thing is possibly, could be very successful. And you've got, what, a couple more orchards? So, you're gonna be setting precedent with what you do with this one, everything else you do. Because sooner or later, if this works, the rest of those orchards are gone, and you're gonna be stuck with what you decided here. Now, the other thing that strikes me about this, what I think is really unique, and maybe someone could help me on this, is trying to think of where I've seen examples of this, okay? And where I think I've seen examples of development similar to this is in the southwest, okay? And what is different about what we're trying to do here versus in, you know, Texas and Arizona places that I've seen these kind of developments is, they tend to work out from a metropolitan area. It's green fields, okay? It's out in the middle of nowhere, and they put in all the infrastructure roads around it and build it. We're attempting to build a relatively large development. It's already surrounded by almost a saturated community. I think that's probably unique, but I'm not certain. So, this is not, this is, I don't know if there is many precedents for what we're trying to do here. But I do know that this, we, this financial program thing here we put here tonight is just a red hair. It's not, it's not very relevant to what we're doing. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Oh, yes. John?
No, none of him, no.
Oh, oh, okay, you're, you're also, thank you.
The applicant.
Oh, yes.
Just wondering if you could help me out here. This is page thirty-three of the report. If you could look down at the bottom in year one, you've got a tax positive of a hundred and one thousand.
Right.
Okay, now, if I can direct you to page twenty-one of your report, table twenty-three. Twenty-one, and it's table twenty-three. Fight upon it, annual capital costs, it's two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
That's the build-out.
So, that's the total?
Right. It's, the capital costs are built on a per call, response call, because that's the amount of capital that's gonna be demanded at any point in time. So, what I did is in the-
But, but you've got cumulative capital costs of three point three million dollars.
Exactly, so if, on the fire department, if I scrolled over, I'm not sure if it's shown on, on here.
That's general fund number, that's not a capital cost number.
Capital costs are built into the fire department number. So, when I built, when I built the fire-
Really?
Right. I built, I built in capital and operating costs into each of the line items on an annual basis. The, the police department has both capital and operating costs. The fire department has both capital and operating costs. So, we did, I did it on a departmental basis for the annual cash flows based on the level of demand at each point, in, in each year. Let me put my glasses on, and I'll tell ya, good sheet to go to. So, for example, if you go to appendix table A, I think it's A-six, you'll see the impacts on the police department over the twenty-year build-out.
I'm just wondering why you would use the term annual cost, then, at two hundred and eighty, eighty thousand, or two hundred, whatever the number is. whatever the number is.
Well, the appendix gives, the appendix gives...
That's what it will achieve at year 20, a full build-out, and that will be carrying on at that.
The main body of the report, its goal, my, my scope of work was to determine at build-out, at stabilization, what are the annual impacts to the town going to be. In appendix, that's where we, where I attempted to look at each year of a build-out period, what the annual bet-out would be, based on how the demand is changing over build-out.
So what's encompassed in that annual capital cost?
As I had explained earlier, if you look at the police capital cost, it is all the complete inventory of fire capital costs that exist in the town today. And those costs are allocated based on response call data. For example, it's derived from starting on table 22. If you can follow through my logic on, I have an existing inventory coming from the towns and report about what, what the all-in capital cost in the police department today. That's the, the numerator, the denominator, I then divided that by the town's response calls in 2012. And then, based on the changing response calls over the build-out period, I associated those response calls with a, a capital cost requirement, as well as an operating requirement. It's the exact approach used in your fire impact fee study.
Maybe it is, but it's devoid of reality. I mean, $285,000 over a 20, 20-year period of capital improvement cost?
That's an annual amount. Over, over a 20-year, 20-year period, $3.2 million is built in for capital, fire capital equipment.
But, I guess that's my question, maybe I'm not understanding something there. If it's an annual cost, and you're averaging in and out to be 285,000, that take, why doesn't it take that negative year one and year two?
Because we're, the 285 is in year 20. You don't, we're, everything's not built in year one. You only have a small portion. You're not going to be generating the same response calls in year one as you are in year 20.
But that's, that's the assumption you use for your entire project, that everything is...
There won't be the same amount of square footage delivered in, in year one as year 20.
I agree. And that's, that's the problem with saying we're going to use averages. And then, we don't use averages.
No, I mean, what, this is much more precise than using an average. It's, it's really based on how you would go on planning for, if our department needs to look at, what do we anticipate our demand, our call demand to be the following year?
Well, maybe it's just me, because I see annual capital costs, and I, I'm assuming that's every year. And then I see cumulative capital costs, and I'm assuming that's the total of the annuals. You know? I don't know.
So why is it that it's not 20 times 285,000?
Because each year over build-out, it's a, it's a growing number of response calls, until it hits the number at full build-out, when all, when all the development is delivered. The main body of the report is looking at year 20. The appendices are looking at how that, that amount is growing incrementally as the different land uses come on board. So example, for the fire department, each year, the number of response calls is projected to increase, because there's going to be more homes, there's going to be more retail, more office space. When, in a couple of years, hotels are going to hit, and in those particular years, the number of response calls associated with the hotels are going to hit. You can't, it would be irresponsible to assume that a hotel is going to generate, that is projected for year five is going to generate fire department calls in year one.
Yeah, I, I think that played the question I asked you at the beginning, which was, what were the assumptions behind that incremental growth? So in year four, what comprised those, the revenue numbers coming in there?
And I think if we look on...
To, to Tom's comment earlier, you know...
If we look on 33, though, they give you the assumptions that they've made. They've made the assumption that there's no commercial in the first year, that it's all residential.
No, no, behind those numbers, Mary, is what I'm talking about. What, is it all WC, you know, W1? What kind of developments were assumed in here? Was it a hotel? Was it a large office block? There had to be some methodology behind that, to come to that number of, that, that commercial, that residential.
Right, and in those...
There was some mix played there to, to come up with those numbers for the tax...
There'll be the detail behind...
Exactly. And to Tom, Tom's comment earlier on, year three, a four-story building goes up, and we've got to go by ladder. But wherever, where, where, in that table, it's spreading it across the entire 20 years.
Because as fiscally prudent planners, that's what we would do. We would spread it over 20 years. We wouldn't ask our town to buy anything.
Or bond it and spread it over.
We'd bond it and spread it over the...
Yeah. I, I think it's just knowing what...
And then, you would prove that the bond would be paid by the tax revenue that's generated by the thing that's being, you know, built.
I think, I think it's bordering on, there's the need for a capital improvement plan to go along with this, because based upon what we think might go out there, we're going to have to plan for it.
So these guys need to come to the CIP on August 12th with, you know, this whole little thing, so that they can...
I mean, to Mike's comment, yeah, we're not going to go out and drop a four and a half million, we're going to bond it.
Or maybe, or maybe separate CIP on what would be the capital, so we'd know what the capital costs.
What's going to be needed, yeah.
Right now, it's all rolled into one, you know?
But it is going to be front-end loaded, to Tom's point, you know, and we're going to have to do some planning around that.
Yeah, I mean, it's like a fixed, fixed cost, but when you increase your fixed costs, it could be a big leap.
What's, what's, what's missing here? We've got a 20-year plan, so we go from zero to 20. But we're missing, you know, if you do any type of planning from a business perspective, after five years, the, the numbers become very, very gray and washed, right? I mean, we're...
John said that also.
Exactly. So I would be interested to see what a five-year plan looks like, right? That would also include the major capital impacts that the town would have to absorb from an infrastructure standpoint.
I think, though, that we're getting away from the whole idea of what the master plan is supposed to be. It's supposed to be...
I don't think we are, Mary. I think we need to...
Well, can I finish before you interrupt?
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
I think it's supposed to be a vision of what could happen in this land. The same way that our vision of our town master plan is a vision of what could happen in this land. Now, we just approved the master plan that talked about reconfiguring the common, the town common. Yet, I don't think that anybody's going to come in to the CIP meeting and say, we need to buy another bulldozer, because we're going to have to change the configuration of the road, and we're going to have bigger plows, or whatever. I'm just saying, it's a vision of what this could happen to be. And when we get the site plans, that's when we're going to be able to say, we need to, I mean, we are saying, this is what might happen, and this is what you might need. But when the site plans come in, that's going to be when we're going to specifically know, okay, you're going to be building the hotel, and that's five stories. And so that means we're going to need that. So let's talk about that. And how can that be financed? And how can that be planned on? And, you know, if we can't afford to buy the fire equipment that is going to have that hospital built, they may not be able to build the hospital. It may have to wait a year, and we might have to put it into the CIP, and we might have to get bond approval for that. And there's lots of different things that could happen in that regard.
So, I don't, if I may, if I may just re, just come back to that. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but what's being presented here are some, some very serious numbers that's being pitched to the town on whether or not this is cash positive or cash negative, right? Has nothing to do with what's going to be built when. What, there's a lot of assumptions that are in here, and there are some assumptions that have been not brought out, as far as what the loaded costs are going to be upfront in order to get this project off the ground, right? And most of those, those costs are going to be in the first five years, which we don't understand yet. And, and what we need to understand is how is that going to impact the town? Because that's our responsibility at the end of the day, to understand how that's going to impact the town, so we can plan accordingly. And we do understand how this is going to have to be absorbed by the town over the period of that time. If you go out, if you say, if you look at it just as a 20-year plan, you say, yeah, it looks great. And it, and you know what? I don't, from everything that I'm hearing from the experts here that are in this room, I'm not disagreeing that this is going to be a cash positive event at 20 years. What I'm concerned with is the first five years right now, because that's going to have the most impact to our town at this point. And that's what I'm after.
And I don't think we can ask them to come in and tell us, what are you going to do in the next five years? Because right now, they have no idea.
If they don't know after this, I'm very concerned about that. I have, I have bigger concerns whether or not this project is the right project to move forward, if they don't understand what to do in the next five years.
I, I think that it's going to depend...
They have a plan in front of it, because they have the numbers for the units that they want to build out.
They have, they have a desire, according to this, according to the assumptions that have been made, to build houses first. It may not happen that that's who they get to come in. You know, they may be approached by a large retailer, and they say, look, we want to put the anchor there, and then you can build your houses around us. But that's what we want to start with. We won't know that until we see the site plan. I don't know how much, how further they can go, until they have an approved master plan to even get people to commit to them.
And that's, and that's well understood. But I, I think even regardless, again, if regardless if you're building a hotel first, residential first, or commercial first, you're still going to have impacts to this town.
That's right.
And we need to understand them, we don't understand them.
But some of them can be absorbed currently, and some of them will require more...
I don't think the town should absorb any of them. I, I think it was put out quite nicely by the gentleman behind Mike, that it's not our responsibility to absorb those costs.
Well, I think that the people that come into this town...
You may think otherwise, I personally do not think that any, that we should, we should bear the burden. And, and I know Mike brought up the, the Pettingvale Road project, I don't think we should bear the burden of that either.
Hmm.
Right? We shouldn't bear, bear the burden of any developer coming in.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little carried away here from the virtual topic.
I'm, I'm asking for a five-year, a five-year study.
Yeah, a follow-on from Mary's comment. There is a fundamental difference between this master plan and the town master plan. Town master plan is a list of, you know, wants and maybe needs, doesn't obligate us to do anything. This master plan will outline what the developer can place there. And at that point, legally, I don't believe, they bring a site plan that informs to the guidance, we, we're not in control at that point. It's an engineering exercise at that point, and an approval, and a crossing of the Ts and a dotting of the Is.
And it depends on the development...
So to your point, there's no mechanism to control, is there a capital item that has to be done in order to enable that to happen?
And that's what I'm saying, that's going to be part of that development agreement, that they're going to...
And that's what I'm getting, that's being my point, it's like...
Right.
That's going to be key.
Right.
It isn't here.
You know?
It's not here yet, so...
I know there's going to be fluctuations in, in, in the, the cash flow. It's nature of life, and it's, you know, with all due respect, you know, they can predict one thing, but it's a business environment, and they're business folks, and they're going to do what's right for business.
Exactly.
You know?
You know, I would take a little exception to that, only because what we've done is follow a standardized and accepted methodology to provide the report that was requested and, and scoped, which is, can we predict on a build-out scenario that this development is going to be fiscally positive for the town? That's the question we were trying to answer, that's the question we provided an answer for.
I think, I think you have answered that one, Ari, too. I don't think anybody here is disputing that at 20 years, it's going to be a positive, you know, cash flow for the town. It's this fluctuation in between, and understanding that we've got some agreement that if there needs to be a capital outlay, we've got some control to that, so that we don't end up really in the hole.
And I don't think that doing a five-year, 10-year, 15-year projection is going to get us any closer to that methodology.
I, I'm with you on that one. I, I think it's more along as the town, lines of the town agreement is going to be...
The agreement side.
The control mechanisms that we have. That's the crux, to me.
I, I think that's a piece that we need to take a look at. It's a piece that is not finalized in any shape or form.
And, and make sure it's legal, too.
Well, I mean, frankly, what we've been doing is placing a lot of pressure on that piece of the puzzle, as a safety net for a lot of the projections that we're making along the way. And I, I think that's appropriate, because frankly, that we'll get as much out of those discussions as the town will. And that's an appropriate place to have that agreement formed, in terms of, you know, entitlements. But we've, I, I just don't want to lose sight of the fact, we set out to do a 20-year fiscal projection. We've done that, we've had peer review for it. The methodologies are acceptable, the projection is positive. And while we could ask questions about any of the assumptions, and, and I had them as well, that are based upon that conceptual modeling, the modeling itself has, has a positive output. And I, and I, I just think we, we should recognize that before we pick it apart. That's, that's my only point.
I, I don't think anybody's arguing that point. There, there are some variables, I think, that we've talked about earlier on that could skew that, but I, I don't think that, it's this growth pains that's going to be the issue.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's the important part. But that will be handled as well.
It seems like we all have the same concerns with that. It seems like we all have the same concerns about just how to get there in the beginning, you know? Because when I looked at the report, I, it's funny, because I had the five years in my brain, too, of, and then when I got to page 33, and I saw the scale and how it plays out over 20 years, I said, okay, I, I see how you have it built in. But I said the same thing, I said, realistically, I'd like to see, you know, over the first five years of where we'd be at, as far as infrastructure and our responsibility as a town. And, and I, and I understand what you're saying, we can do all the analysis you want, it's still going to be, you know, a floating number. But I, I think we're all under the agreement that we, we're all being realistic, knowing that the infrastructure's going to have to take place, and we know that that comes with a cost. And I think that we're all just being realistic that, you know, you know, that's not going to, it's not going to come for free, we have to, we have to plan for it. And, and I, and I keep saying, I think it's all in development agreement as to, we have to have a little bit of a comfort zone with how we're going to, how we're going to handle that.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, Mike?
Mike Spaltz, 18, Sugar Plum. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for a second at bat. Very short question. Was the study constrained by the town's growth management ordinance and phasing ordinance?
No. No, not what I'm aware of, anyway, you know?
And I guess then that begs the question, would that make a difference?
I think if we're looking at tax positive and tax negative, basically, that's what growth management does. Because growth management controls residential growth.
I'm thinking of that table. In other words, what that will do is influence what can be done in what year, perhaps. I mean, I'm not...
It's, yeah.
Having done the study, I'm just saying, is it something that we should be looking at?
Yes. I mean, I think it'll be part, part of it, definitely, we have to consider that. But it, it is a method of control, is growth positive and, you know, you know, what's tax positive, tax negative, basically, that's what growth management does, because it controls your residential growth, which is generally tax negative. And there's no controls at all on commercial or industrial. So therefore, that's what the town's been encouraging the last 20 years, after we had gone through the rapid residential phase of a growth from the 70s into the 90s and into the 2000s even.
I, I just think it would be prudent to take a look at it, and make sure that what's presented here fits within our existing ordinances, or, or else we should see a waiver request, if, if that's the developer's intent.
Yeah. But I mean, our, our intent also, and I think everyone's, is, is a controlled, you know, controlled growth, and to keep it, as, as you heard from members here, so it's tax positive all, along the way, but...
Mr. Chairman, I, I believe the master plan specifically states that they're not going to be constrained, that they do not want to be constrained by the growth management ordinance.
Yes, I'm aware that that's what the applicant has asked for.
So I wouldn't expect that the tax, or the fiscal impact assessment would take that into consideration either.
It could be part of the development agreement, though.
Our, our effort here was to show that we did not need to have those constraints, because we have a positive fiscal projection.
Yeah. Any, okay, anyone else?
Thank you.
You have something, Mike? Okay. So, uh, we will continue this hearing till...
Well, Mr. Chair, is it appropriate for us to ask RPG to do the worst case? Well, Mr. Chair, is it appropriate for us to ask RPG to do the worst case, as Mike had suggested?
I'd like to pursue that recommendation as well.
Okay.
As would I.
I think I'll, I'll need to discuss that with Cynthia in terms of the, the timing, logistics, and the level of data. The analysis that was done, was done with their own internal modeling. It would be much, it would be very helpful if I could get that modeling, to see their model, so that I could then rerun it, rerun those options, look at some of the sensitivities to some of those things for you. Otherwise, I'm gonna have to recreate it from scratch. So that's gonna be, have to have a discussion we'll have to have with the applicant.
Okay, I think that'll be handled internally anyways.
Right.
But I think that something would be helpful for, for us.
We, we would also ask to be part of those discussions, because I think it's unlikely that we would subscribe to a duplicative endeavor.
Right. I think you both have to work together as, like in this report.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm not able to commit to, to any of that right now, and I'd like to be part of that discussion.
Okay, sure. Yeah. Understood.
Okay. Can, can I ask a question about that? If, if, and if that does take place, can we have you come back and basically identify what you're gonna actually do, and what's been agreed upon, before you start?
I don't know how that fits in.
Our timetable, though, for July tenth?
Well, I, again, not, we're, we're asking for certain things. If they don't concede, we're, we're out. If, let's say, it comes to a different agreement, and we get something different. I, I would just like to know, you know, from some communication, what's actually gonna be done, what's been hammered out?
Maybe we should see it first, before we take the lead.
I, I just wanna go back to the conversation we just were having, which it may very well be that the development agreement is the better place to, to essentially erect your safety net. And, and so, that's why I'm hesitant to agree to any of this on the fly.
I think it'd be better to have staff discuss that.
And come to a recommendation to us.
Yes, yeah, just like tonight.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this until July ten?
Seven P.M.
I'll, I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn to continue this hearing to the tenth of July two thousand thirteen at seven P.M.
So, Mr. Chair, if I text you, or you read my text, so that the thing... Because I might be watching from Ireland.
Oh, okay. You can text me, and I'll read the text into the public, public屏. Okay. Any discussion on the motion to continue? Sign on, hold in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. Senator, she was affirmative, and Tom is, takes eight. If there's no other business, I'll take a vote.
Did you remember the thing that you wanted to tell us?
Uh, no.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
By Mary, second by Lynn, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.